Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Brightigam.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Dovin.
Present.
Councilmember Klaufenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen Pinalozza.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tran.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. May I ask Assistant City Manager Matt West to do the invocation, followed by Councilmember Klaufenstein to lead us in the pledge.
Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we convene today, may our minds be illuminated by wisdom, our actions guided by compassion, and our aspirations fueled by hope. Let us draw inspiration from the rich tapestry of our city's history, honoring the legacy of those who came before us by finding strength in our unity and resilience in our differences. Let us pledge ourselves to the noble task of shaping the city that inspires, uplifts, and demonstrates our steadfast commitment to the common good, and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Please place your hand with your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like a whole world going on out there. All right, we will go to presentations. We do have a couple, so the first is a community spotlight in recognition of Garden Grove Police Captain William Allison on his retirement following thirty-two years of service.
This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize Police Captain William Allison on his retirement from the Garden Grove Police Department following thirty-two illustrious years of service. Born and raised in Garden Grove, Captain Allison joined the Garden Grove Police Department on June eleventh, nineteen ninety-one, as a police cadet, becoming a full-time officer in nineteen ninety-five. He worked as a patrol officer for five years, during which he was a five-time Orange County Auto Theft Officer of the Year, leading the county in locating stolen vehicles. In two thousand eight, he was promoted to Patrol Sergeant, supervising the Resort Services Unit and Bicycle Patrol Detail. Less than ten years later, he became a Lieutenant, during which he served as a Watch Commander and oversaw the property and evidence and record divisions. As a proven and respected leader, Bill ascended to Captain in twenty nineteen, leading the Support Services Bureau overseeing the investigations, communications, and record divisions. Throughout Captain Allison's exemplary career, he has committed himself to being an engaged and supportive leader for the exceptional men and women of the Garden Grove Police Department, and proudly served the community through his long-term membership with the Orange County Law Enforcement Explorer Advisors Association, where he coordinated thirty-two Explorer Academies and witnessed over five thousand police explorers graduate. One of his most notable accomplishments was being an advisor for the Garden Grove Police Explorer Post for twenty-two years, where he mentored young men and women preparing for a career in law enforcement. On December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, Captain Allison retired from the city of Garden Grove following thirty-two years of illustrious career service to the Garden Grove community and multiple generations of Garden Grove police personnel. At this time, the Garden Grove City Council would like to present Captain Allison with the Crystal Award in honor of his meritorious service to the city and community of Garden Grove, and the city wishes him the best on his very well-deserved retirement. Congratulations.
First, I'd like to thank the mayor, our council, as well as the city for this honored and surprised recognition. It does not go unappreciated, so thank you very much to all of you. As the Assistant City Manager spoke of, I was born and raised here, and I grew up as a teenager knowing some of the Garden Grove police officers, and that's what, one of some of the reasons I focused on our city here still and wanted to repay for the first part of my life never having an issue in this city. I was able to walk to school, I was able to play in the neighborhoods and play on the street and never have a problem in my life, and I wanted to continue that. Knowing the family orientation that this department had through the officers that influenced me as a teenager, I pursued here, and through good times and bad, through great mentors and living through the tragedies of losing some of my friends here at this department, I saw the foundation of this department and the family orientation get stronger and stronger. The glue always stayed, no matter what the challenge was, and that kept me here. Through my years and the allotment that this department gave me flexibility to be on several state and county organizations and talking to other agencies, I can tell you, we have an outstanding agency. We have very, very little ever to complain about with how the city treats us compared to many others and how our department lives and works compared to many others. And every time I would come back, I could tell everyone, we have it outstanding here. That's what kept the glue going, that what kept me motivated here as well. So thank you to all of you, to the gentlemen in the back of the room, and some of the ladies over here in this far corner that are friends and colleagues of mine for many years now. I want to say thank you as well. Thank you to all of you in the back of the room right now. You are my friends, my brothers, my sisters, my colleagues, and you'll always be part of me. The city will always be part of me as well, so thank you very much for this opportunity.
You are a class act, sir, and you exemplify everything that's so great about this department. Thank you and wish you the very best in your retirement. All right, item, presentation three is an update on code enforcement activities.
Yes, item three is an update on code enforcement activities as presented by Community Development, and Community Development Director Nikki Wetzel is here to introduce the item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We're very pleased to be here before you this evening to tell you all the things that have been going on in code enforcement, and it's also an opportunity to introduce our new Code Enforcement Officer Rafael Avala. He's one of our newest members of the Community Development Team, and he'll be presenting to you this evening.
Okay, thank you for that welcome. So, good evening, Mayor Steve Jones, City Council, and good evening to the residents of Garden Grove. Thank you for granting us this opportunity to give a brief presentation on the Code Enforcement Unit. We will provide a quick overview on Code Enforcement staffing levels, our process, citizen request data, success stories, updates on outreach, and information on the Code Volunteer Program. My name is Rafael Avala, and I am the Code Enforcement Supervisor. I hold a bachelor's degree in sociology, and I'm a certified code enforcement officer through the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers. I have been in this role since January second of this year. I have about ten years of code enforcement experience and fifteen years of public service experience. I come from our neighbor to the north, Anaheim, and I'm very excited to be part of this Garden Grove family. With us this evening, we have members of our code enforcement team present. Team, if you may, please stand. So we have a saying among our staff, "We are tiny but mighty."
Thank you, guys.
The Code Enforcement Unit ensures properties and individuals are in compliance with the Garden Grove Municipal Codes, California Building Codes, California Health and Safety Codes, and other various codes. The issues we address range from simple trash cans in public view to more complex land use violations. The Code Enforcement Unit is composed of one code enforcement supervisor, one senior code enforcement officer who oversees the administrative needs, code-related plan reviews, and also assists staff with any oversight of more complex cases, five full-time code enforcement officers assigned to addressing citizens' requests and code violations, one code enforcement officer who administers the tobacco enforcement grant, and one part-time code officer who oversees a short-term rental program. Our team works diligently during business hours, after hours, and on the weekends to address city needs. Code Enforcement's primary goal is to educate the public and acquire voluntary compliance. When our officers receive, or sorry, when our office receives a citizen's request, a case is assigned to an officer who will conduct an investigation and inspection of the property. We attempt to make contact with the property owner or occupants to inform them of the violations. We provide direction on how to bring the property into compliance. We issue the property owner and other involved parties notification letters with required actions and a timeframe to come into compliance. Upon reinspection, if the property is still found to be out of compliance, our officers may proceed with issuing advance citations. With more difficult cases or with properties that remain in violation after the citation process, we may utilize a number of tools, including referral to the city attorney's office, request for civil injunction through the courts, filing a receivership, or conducting a nuisance abatement. Eventually, the property comes into compliance and the case is closed. The following figure shows how many citizen's requests we have received for the past five years. As you may see, since twenty twenty, the number of requests our officers have received has increased, and it continues to increase. For the calendar year of twenty twenty-three, the Code Enforcement Office received a total of two thousand four hundred and eleven complaints. It is expected that we'll intake more requests in twenty twenty-four than last year. Currently, our enforcement officers maintain an average of three hundred and twenty open cases per officer. The following data reflects the types and frequency of each request received for the year of twenty twenty-three. The top five requests that our officer, our office receives includes graffiti on private property, unmaintained landscaping, storage of debris, trash, and other materials, trash cans in public view, and unpermitted construction, which may vary from unpermitted windows to a full-on unpermitted conversion. Code Enforcement will begin to place an emphasis on vacant lots and abandoned buildings. A majority of these vacant lots and abandoned buildings are found within the city's busiest corridors. These properties are the first and last that residents see as they enter and leave our city. Unfortunately, some of these properties have become an attractive nuisance. In response, Code Enforcement will begin to monitor these properties, condense the notification process, and if required, refer these properties to the city attorney's office. Our intent is to build relationships and collaboratively seek solutions to any ongoing issues. An example of our involvement with vacant lots and abandoned buildings includes thirteen twenty-five-two Brooker's. This was the site of the prior Marie Calenders, which was left vacant and unmaintained. This property had significant fire damage and had a number of transient encampments. The conditions of the property required immediate attention and open engagement with the current property representatives. After elevated enforcement and direct coordination with the property representatives, the property is now maintained with a bimonthly maintenance regimen. Code Enforcement continues to monitor this location and has open dialogue with the current property representatives. To address the complexities of the unhoused on these properties, we coordinate with Garner Grove PD Special Resources Team, Bwell OC, and Cal Optima to provide resources and assistance to both property owners and the unhoused population. With residential properties, we reactively address a number of issues associated with property maintenance, as well as impacts to health and safety. Unmaintained properties include properties with trash cans in public view, inoperable vehicles that have an accumulation of various debris. One unmaintained property has the potential to degrade neighborhoods and impact property values. Our officers work with the property owners and occupants to inform on the property standards and work collaboratively to find solutions. Our goal is to have properties comply with our municipal codes, thus producing well-maintained properties with curb appeal. With tranquil and well-maintained neighborhoods, the quality of life for Garner Grove residents may significantly improve. Garden Grove has also seen an increase in unpermitted sidewalk vending. Sidewalk vending takes the form of sales and merchandise of food from the public right-of-way. Sidewalk vending is prohibited when appropriate permits and approvals are not acquired. Sidewalk vendors may require a city business license, sidewalk vending permit, and a county health permit. To address these increased complaints, staff is working into the evening and during the weekends, while also working with Orange County Healthcare Agency in both education and enforcement. When sidewalk vendors are found to operate without appropriate permits, our staff will educate and will require the vendors to cease their operation. Community Development and Community Relations have rolled out a public outreach and educational campaign, Plan Build Beautify. The month of June will be dedicated to informing the public on the work of code enforcement. As a part of this campaign, through flyers and handouts, Code Enforcement will highlight how to submit a citizen's request, the code enforcement process, residential property standards, commercial property standards, and vacant lot standards. This will be a multilingual campaign, which will include social media posts, radio, and television broadcasting. Additionally, Code Enforcement will be making an increased presence at community meetings and public forums, where we will be directly engaging with the public. Most recently, we presented at one of Clinton Youth and Family Center for property owners, managers, and residents of the neighborhood. We have updated and will continue to update our website, making it more easier and friendlier to provide, which will provide useful information for the public. From our website, the public can review our municipal codes, request public records, apply to become a volunteer, and report a code violation. We are also excited to reinitiate the Code Volunteer Program, which has been in hiatus since the start of COVID nineteen. We are accepting applications and have interviewed prospective volunteers. Code volunteers play a pivotal role by assisting our code officers and by taking an active role and serving our community. The Garner Grove Code Volunteer Program is known for providing individuals with a skillset and knowledge to enter into career in code enforcement. Three of our five current full-time staff members started their careers as code volunteers. Some of our code volunteers have gone to become successful code officers with other jurisdictions. Regardless if your goal is to enter into a code enforcement field or not, we take in eager and dedicated individuals to join our team as a volunteer. If residents or concerned citizens wish to submit a request, let me do so by using the Report and Issue platform, which may be accessed online or via the City of Garden Grove app, calling our office at seven one four, seven four one, five three five eight, or by emailing codeenforcement@codeenforcement@ggcity.org. This concludes our presentation on code enforcement. I would like to thank you all again for providing us this opportunity to explain our program. We are free to answer any questions you may have.
Colleagues, any questions, comments? Joe?
First, welcome on board. I have a couple of questions and a couple of suggestions. First is, have you had an opportunity to be in the field with your officers and actually interact with some of the residents?
Yes, thank you for that question. Yes, I've had the opportunity to do ride-alongs with my officers and seeing the day-to-day tasks that they complete, seeing where we are excelling at and where we can improve.
Okay, great. You know, I've interacted with you in some cases, this code enforcement cases, and I've always had very good outcomes, and you know that we try to bring people into compliance, you know? And I like the fact that you're trying to step up the timeline, and some of it's on automatic, so when people get a letter, you have a reminder for them to make progress on these cases. I am a bit concerned about squatting, because I've heard about it in other counties and other cities, and it might even be more of a problem in our city. And I'm wondering if you have kind of a plan of action when there's a situation where a vacant property has been taken over by squatters, and how to not just have that situation resolved with interdepartmental coordination, it may involve the police, may involve building, planning officers, but I'd like to see some sort of a plan of action for a situation where squatting is involved.
Thank you for that comment, and we can certainly look into that. And as you said, it would likely be a coordinated effort with several city departments and the city attorney's office, but certainly we can look into that issue.
Okay, great. I'm kind of heading off some situation where we've had problems and they've actually burned down buildings, so we want to try to prevent that and head off on some of those developments.
It would be incumbent on property owners to secure the properties, because once you have squatter, then you have to involve the courts, because there's no self-help in evicting individuals, you need a court order. So our officers, my office, our police officers are not able to physically remove anyone from private property without a court order.
That's good to know, and I want the residents to note that, that we are somewhat limited in what we can do, and it may involve the courts, and I mean interdepartmental in this case, maybe a legal action that's beyond what your department can handle. Lastly, I like the fact that we're reinitiating the Code Volunteer Program. I've met most of our officers in the field and in the office. I recognize Rita, I know Ashley, I've met Jake in the field. I hope that we don't have a lot of turnover, and we try to retain the officers that we have, and you coming on board will be able to build out a team. And if you need any help from us in terms of being able to staff better, because I don't know that the staff that you have now will be adequate, but please do come back to us and maybe make regular reports on your needs assessment so that we know how to best to support your department, okay? That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Stephanie.
Thank you so much. I think all of us here on the dais, obviously, being councilmembers, we get a lot of calls and a lot of concerns from constituents. Code enforcement is the top of our list when we had our retreat. It was one of our council priorities, so it's definitely at the first of our mind. I really appreciate seeing the deepening of the outreach and education component back to the community. I think that's extremely important, just to talk about, anytime we can share responsibilities and work better together to create solutions, I think that's going to be very helpful. And as Councilmember Joe Dovin mentioned, the Code Enforcement Volunteer Program, I think will be very helpful as well, just having people feel like they can be a part of the solution and just part of the team, I think will be very beneficial in the long run as well. So thank you for the update. I know you're a small but mighty team, but hopefully the volunteer program will help. Thank you.
Anybody else? All righty, thank you so much, we appreciate it, and we appreciate you guys, the thankless work that you guys do out there to make our city better. Thank you. All right, we're going to go out of order here next, so I'd like to pull forward item eighteen, which is listed under Matters, and this is the Parks and Facilities Capital Improvements Update. I'll hand it over to Janet.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, we're excited to provide updates on upcoming capital projects managed by the Community Services and Public Works Parks and Facilities Division. My voice is still recovering from being under the weather, so I'm going to turn it over to Janet, who will do the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. We would like to begin this presentation with Woodbury Park Revitalization and Expansion Project. I would first like to provide some background on this project. In December of twenty twenty-one, the city was awarded six million dollars in a grant from the California Department of Parks and Recreation. Sorry, my mic moved. Woodbury Park was the park selected for the competitive grant opportunity due to the park acreage per one thousand residents being under half an acre, and the surrounding neighborhood having the lowest median household income compared to other city parks. The project is a complete remodel of the existing three-point-three-acre park and expansion to the southeast corner of the park, absorbing half an acre of Woodbury Elementary School. These improvements were designed with the help from residents through various community meetings during the grant application process. The new three-point-eight-acre park will include the installation of a walking trail, outdoor fitness equipment, recreational swimming pool, two playground areas, picnic shelters, a skate spot, basketball courts, lighting, restrooms, and a parking lot. The city contracted David Vols Design Landscape Architects to complete the design and construction plans for the past year. Staff have been working with the architectural team to develop the plans. This evening, we have Gary Voskis and Brian Avalos from the architectural team, who will go over the final design plans for this project, and I'd like to have them come up to the podium.
Great. Good evening. I'm Gary Voskis with David Vols Design Landscape Architect. As Janet has mentioned, we've been working with the city for probably over a past year in designing a new Woodbury Park for you. I'm excited to present where we're at this evening. We are actually about ninety percent completed construction drawings. We're waiting on feedback from the city, from Plan Check, and hope to get those shortly so we can continue along our way, so... But this evening is the presentation of Woodbury Park. It's about a three-point-eight, three-point-three-acre park site, and it's, we've kind of taken the existing park and just revision the entire park through the help of the community. We've had a number of community meetings and a lot of community input to get us to where we're at this evening. The park itself will have a new parking lot, about a thirty-two-space parking lot that would be accessible from both Cynthia and Rosarita Place. The parking lot itself will have, will be controlled access when the park is open and closed, you'll be able to control parking access with gates at the, those entry points. There'll be pedestrian access into the park throughout, both off Cynthia and Rosarita, Rosarita Place, as well as currently, there is no access off of Phyllis, which is kind of on the northern upper right-hand of your screen, but there will be a new pedestrian access off of Phyllis into the park side. It'll have, will have two new buildings, structures going into the park to replace the existing restroom facility, and a new pool house as well, and a pool. Talk about that in a second. But what's exciting, the core of the park is made up of the, really, the new playground, which is a quite extensive playground. We designed it, again, with the help of a lot of community, people who participated in our community workshops. It is going to be a jungle-themed, play-themed playground, and the focus was to design a all-inclusive play environment, meaning a play environment that will accommodate children with different play skill levels. The play equipment will be all accessible, will have rubberized surfacing throughout, and because it's a jungle theme, the rubber's going to have some nice kind of organic jungly themed design into the play environment. We have play equipment that will, again, accommodate children who are ages two to five, as well as five to twelve, and other play components that are easily accessible, that, again, encourage children to socialize and play together, and different age play apparatuses throughout the playground. So that's kind of like the central highlight, I think, one of the highlights of the park. We'll have shade sails also covering portions of the play pieces, and we'll, before we, John's already got to the next slide, but this, the slide that you're looking at there is the, one of the main towers that we're going to be putting in. It's kind of attracts the older children, it's two towers, it'll have multiple slides coming off of those towers, ten, twelve feet above ground. Again, we tried to take the play equipment and work with the playground manufacturer to kind of enhance the jungle theme, if you will, even on the play equipment itself, so you'll have some leaves, some leaf steppers in the playground, play surfacing, and as you can see, you know, the posts themselves have been modified slightly to kind of create more of a bamboo jungly kind of feel through the play pieces. So we got the playground there, and we'll have, we're going to be replacing the existing basketball court and building a new basketball court, a full court plus two additional half courts, so we're going to be increasing the recreational value there in the park itself. We're going to have a circular loop walkway that will have a nice walking path that will parallel that walkway, a softer DG path throughout, and, let me see, a skate park. Why'd you go to the skate park, John? We'll have about a five thousand square foot... We'll have a, about a 5,000 square foot skate park, as you see there, we've located that skate park kind of to the, be kind of to the east of the park site, and it's designed to accommodate skaters from beginners to kind of mid-level skaters, but it's, it's, we tried to separate it from the primary pedestrian circulation throughout the park, the loop system that, that we'll have in there, we'll have fitness equipment, the independent, separate fitness stations as well, and let's see, the, let me go back to the restroom structure, it's three men, three women, it'll, it'll be able, it'll have a separate little storage and a little separate space for, to, for office staff to use as well. The new park, the, I'm sorry, the new pool building itself will be a very nice structure, it'll have a separate breezeway down through the center of the, the structure itself, and that will control public access into the pool deck area. The pool itself is about a seventy-five foot by forty-five foot, five lane swimming pool, very nice, quite of extensive pool deck, it'll be all enclosed by, with an eight-foot-high tube steel fence. Let's see, it'll have office space for staff, we'll have shaded spectator seating near the pool, the building itself will have five restrooms, five showers, outdoor rinse-off showers for the users, and a separate indoor space for the pool equipment and pool chemical storage area as well, so it's gonna be a really nice facility, that itself will be about a twenty-one hundred square foot structure when all said and done. So I didn't mention, we'll have picnic shelters as well scattered throughout the park, covered shaded areas, as well as picnic tables, independent, individual picnic tables as well. So we can go to the next slide now, I'm sorry. So that's, it gives you an image of the playground and some of the skate elements that you'll see there, this is elevation of the restroom structure that will replace the existing, and then the elevation of the, I missed that, the elevation of the pool house as well. So with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Janet, and I think we'll take questions later, is that?
Right after, or unless you wanna ask questions now, I was gonna just quickly review the timeline, but we can ask questions now. Yes, okay, so go ahead.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Kim, yes.
I'll do all of my, I love you guys so much, comments later, so questions first, splash pad was removed?
It was, we had a separate waiting pool slash pad, kind of a splash pad element in the pool area itself, in, in coming up with the design you see this evening, we had to look at the budget, and so that was one of the things we decided would probably need to be removed for now.
Okay, for now, I'll try to get more money, I'll cost some people. The other thing I wanted to know was, was there any, will there be, I know there's gonna be a walking path, is there gonna be any thoughts to having dog poop stations?
That's a good point, currently, we don't, but that's something we can easily add some, some stations.
Okay, I think that would be great, I know that there's a lot of residents that have mentioned to me, the, one of the reasons for wanting the walking path, not only for exercise for themselves, but also to take their dogs, just because it's kind of unsafe in overcrowded neighborhoods, so that would be really great, and I know that I was a big advocate from the very beginning for dog-type amenities, and I had mentioned water fountains that have the lower spout at the bottom for dogs, so if that's anywhere in there that we could look into, that would be great, but otherwise, those are the only questions I have at the moment.
We do have two drinking fountains going in, as well as bike racks and things like that, but we can definitely consider the, the pet drinking bowl as well, so.
I think it is part of the plan, yes, for the pebbles, so. Any other questions?
Yes, couple of questions and then also suggestions. I'm big on security, and I know you have security cameras, and you so quoted some, like five and maybe more in, in and around, do you think that's adequate to catch all of the different areas and angles?
Sorry, Councilmember Dovin, we actually don't have that as part of this project right now, it wasn't part of the initial budget, that was approved with the grant, but we are looking at installing those once we're in construction, and so that'll be a separate budget and a separate project.
Okay, so it's happened before where we've had a project and budget for security cameras, but we'd be more than happy to vote on it if it comes to that. Also, I know in college campuses, they have these stations where you push a button for emergency situation and, and trigger a police response, is that something we have in the designs or could put in?
We currently do not, and it's something we can consider, sure, yeah, again, we're ninety percent complete, but I think that could be something, we're gonna have to look at the budget, but I think that's.
Again, some of this is as an afterthought on my part as, as councilman, but I, I'd like to see that feature as an added security measure, when somebody has an emergency, they can push a button, and it's, it's very prevalent on, on college campuses now, which is, I think, very, very appropriate, and, and if we can have public parks, I think that's a feature I'd like to have. Also with the design, we just groundbreaking event for the public safety building, and I was the one to suggest that we look at the bollards as a protective measure, so you have vehicles coming in and out, and we're accessible from the street, so as part of the design, if there's any areas of concern that you can identify to add bollards, I know you have the gates, and you have the parking spaces, and it's probably not a high probability that a vehicle can fly into a park, but just this weekend, we had a vehicle fly into somebody's residence and caused a fatality, so anything that we can head off that kind of an incident, in terms of designing for safety with bollards.
Yeah, well, actually, we do, we, there is an area that, where we have the outdoor fitness stations, which is kind of at the end of the parking lot, we, we do have some circular bollards that would be somewhat of a deterrent for vehicles going into the fitness area from the parking lot.
Yeah, I'd feel better if there was something to kind of break the, if we have a speeding vehicle. And this also came up is signage, and even digital signage, if it's on city property per se, I'd kind of like some sort of a, a digital signage, because we may have events or other activities there, and I don't know how you're going to, if we do, allow people to book for picnic tables and so on, will we be allow for, allowing for events and people being able to book parties on the park site?
Yeah, I could probably answer that. Well, we do currently right now on most of our parks, we do have, they're not digital signs, but they, we have framing for our, our vinyl banners, where we usually have, put a lot of our information, contact information for people to contact the Community Services Department, QR codes and so on and so forth, and then, and then throughout some of our picnic shelters, you could potentially add cat, little cabinets to have, you could put flyers or information, bulletin boards, thank you. So we do have, we do have that in mind, that we can potentially put out there.
Okay, great, so that's it, part of the design, that you have some areas where we have some bulletin boards?
Yeah, we, the, the, the park will allow for that, I think that, once we kind of conclude the actual design of the park, that's something that we can definitely add, it's not very difficult to add afterwards.
Okay, so I have just one more suggestion, and I don't know if it's totally something we can't work into the plans, but we have a resurgence or searchance of pickleball, where a lot of interest in other cities, and they're trying to retrofit, renovate their courts to accommodate pickleball, and I don't know if there's something in, or Woodbury or other park plans, if, if we have that as part of the design, or if we don't, because I don't wanna do it after the fact, if we're gonna have pickleball courts, maybe we should, you know, initiate that from the beginning, because I see some cities now, and, or neighboring cities, who are putting that into their parks.
Yeah, currently, it's not programmed for pickleball, but.
Right, I can answer that, so as mentioned in the beginning, during the background, this was a park that was designed with community input, and part of the grant application process required that the amenities were prioritized based on the feedback that we received, and at, and at that time, pickleball was not something that the community requested, so we cannot go back and add that recreation amenity because the grant was specific to what we applied for, so at this time, this design will go with these recreation features.
Okay, yeah, because we might have more questions and more people who wants it, and we have to be able to give them a, a good answer, that that wasn't in the original grant and award, so we, we can't add it after the fact, but maybe down the road later on, we can renovate.
And, and just to go back regarding your, your question on security, the park will be relit, we'll have park, walkway lighting throughout the park, the courts themselves, the skate park, as well as basketball courts, will be lit as well, so just lighting itself will, will, I think, help.
Yeah, and just to touch on that, this, when we were going to the community with this project and getting community feedback, PD was a big stakeholder in those community meetings, one of the bigger, one of the biggest reasons why this park is getting renovated the way it is getting renovated was be, with a lot, is a lot with PD's input, based on their ability to access the park, get vehicles in there, in and out of the park, with, with their safety in mind, so PD had a lot of stake into the safety design of this park.
Thank you very much, it's reassuring.
Since I became a councilmember, I have received many requests in a way like complaint about not being able to use the restroom in Garden Go Park, so this question not new to our staff, but also this question to you too, with the new park, what is your mechanism or the method for you to prevent people from vandalizing the restroom or graffiti?
Well, we modeled some of the restroom design, I believe, after other restroom facilities in, in the city that are probably a little more, have been a little more successful in maybe deterring graffiti and things like that. These restroom will be masonry structures, split face, masonry block, and then a rock kind of skirt around the base as well. So we're kind of taking the lead from current city restroom buildings, I guess, we have gates instead of solid doors to access the restrooms themselves, to, I think, just help reduce that possibility of, of, you know, keeping people out of that restroom that shouldn't be there.
Yeah, that's, oh, sorry, go ahead, yeah, that's, sorry, that, that's one of the key things that we looked at in talking with our Public Works Department, and our PD is having some sort of visibility inside the restroom from the outside, we don't have a solid door where you can't see what's going on inside the restroom, now they, this is gonna be a gated door, so you can see inside the restroom, but still have the privacy to be able to use the restroom, so more, you know, like I said, it goes in line with the safety of the officers, if there's something going on in there, they can easily hear or see that there's someone in there, as opposed to some of these other restrooms that have complete solid doors, you have no idea what's going on i- inside those restrooms, and so nothing's foolproof, we've talked to lots and lots and lots of cities, we've talked to lots of manufacturers, you know, outside of having a see-through bathroom, nothing is foolproof, so the, but we're, we're gonna try to mitigate as much as we can.
Thank you for addressing that, because that is something that we talk about so many times, and I think at least you thought about it and have some type of solution, so thank you.
Yeah, and our structures will, they, we'll, we'll seal them with a graffiti coat as well, if they get tagged, you know, the idea is we'll be able to at least pressure wash some of that off, that's the intent anyway, so.
Just a couple of quick things, the property line, the existing pool, is that on garden grow proper, uh, city property or school district property?
School district.
That's what I thought, and will the property line of the new park incorporate more of the district property in line with the pool?
Yes, another half acre will.
That's what I thought, okay.
And so it's all in an agreement that we went through with GGUSD.
So it's actually expanding the park?
Yes.
Great, and then about the operating hours of the pool, obviously, we're not gonna have an open pool with no staff member there or lifeguard there, right, so what will be the operating hours of the pool that, that we think going forward, seasonally, I guess, probably?
We don't have concrete hours yet, but we are looking at year-round programming, if, assuming that we have the staffing and revenue to be able to do that, but we are, that is the plan with a bigger pool.
Right, 'cause I'm all in favor of all our parks having staffing while the park is open to use the amenities, with bringing down our liability on things like pools and just in general, right, so if we're gonna build something and spend money to improve it, let's staff it to be open for the public, right, and I know it's difficult, 'cause we've had this problem with the bathrooms for a decade, you know, or more, of, you know, what do we do with these bathrooms, because they're not, there's no staff person present, and they turn into a locked door and a, you know, someone in there and camping in there, so, anyway, but I think we've made a, a lot of progress, and I'm excited for Kim in District Six, because she's been looking for this for a long time, so, thank you so much for all the work you guys have done on it, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it's really exciting, and I know Kim's gotta be excited, 'cause she's been like talking about this for a long time, so congratulations on finally getting this to come to fruition. I do have some concerns, like John said with the, and Cindy with the, the bathrooms, not so much as the vandalism, 'cause, you know, that's gonna happen here and there, and unfortunately, there's not a whole lot we can do. But more about the security application, traditionally, we have park rangers going around with a lock and unlocking the bathroom every morning, and then coming back around at night and locking it back up, and it's very labor-intensive, and I talked to John and Bill, our Public Works, and they were talking about experimenting with some locks that they can remotely access from the city, and, you know, that might be more beneficial, and if we're putting in a new park, the last thing I wanna see is, oh, we gotta close the bathrooms, because, you know, there's too much knuckleheads or whatever, we gotta have some way to control that from the get-go. Like Councilman Dovin said, if I, if I start hearing about cameras six months from now, I'm gonna lose my head, 'cause this has happened twice to us now, where things should've been planned in advance and put out, and, you know, if I'm, I mean, honestly, we all know this park needs cameras, so let's do it right, let's do it now, while we still can, let's get the wiring in, the conduit in for the cam, whatever it takes, while it's all, you know, so we don't have to dig things up and it costs more money to do it later, just, you know, announce a prevention, right? So I am very excited about the basketball courts, I think, you know, that over pickleball, I, you know, I don't play much pickleball, but I used to coach the girls' basketball teams, and trying to find a location to practice was always challenging, and so I like that you have those two half courts, 'cause sometimes when you're just practicing, you don't need a full court, because you're doing drills, you're doing, you know, so I think that creates a better environment for more people to use the facility, so I'm good with that, and, but yeah, I'm very excited, this looks like a really neat project, is that, so the, the splash pad got changed into like a little wave pool, is that what I'm seeing?
Well, it was a combination waiting pool kind of splash pad, wasn't, because it, it has, it would have water in all the time, but it did have some spray elements that would come up and, you know, have these above, above, yeah, above-water level spray elements, so.
So we, we got rid of this, that spray stuff, but the, the water element is still there, right, the waiting part of it?
No, that was, the waiting pool was.
Yeah, you're right, let's find some more money for that, that's, that's kind of a cool thing, so, okay, okay, well, it is what it is for now, we can.
You know, your current splash pad is, that's out in the park, is a, a couple spray heads in the concrete.
Yeah, and I know those are very expensive and name, too, I know we've had, so.
But yeah, unfortunately, that was one of the things that we kind of had to, to take out of the, the plan at the moment, so.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I do one suggestion, sorry, Kim, maybe a suggestion, as electrician, what I would do, an easy fix, is if you run an extra conduit to the light poles, there's a lot of good lighting here, but you could run a camera, a low voltage conduit to each one of those poles in a loop, and that way you could put a camera on any pole you want later.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll pay for the, I'll go do it for free.
Well, I'm sure we'll talk to staff and we'll talk to our electrical consultant and see.
No, it's okay. Not so much as a question, but a comment. Is there a way that we can kind of reconfigure the pool a little bit instead of having, I know, maybe it's already there or not, I don't know, but typically pools have those little steps to get you into the water. Could we just have that like a gradual slope so that way little ones can kind of hang out on the top rather than steps because steps are still scary for the itty-bitty ones? So like, you know what I'm talking about? You know how they have like the gradual?
Yeah, I forget what they call it, but zero, yeah, zero entry, water entry. I will need to discuss that with our aquatics consultant to see if that's possible into a lap pool.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the question is whether it will work with a lap pool because the lap pools are designed for the aquatic sessions, right? And sometimes there's restrictions with, you know, having little toddlers in an area where they could potentially fall into a deeper pool, right? So.
The waiting pool did have that zero entry and gradual entry into.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll start making some phone calls to see if we can get some additional monies for that. But I don't, I don't want, I know you have timelines to say, so just jump into my comments really quickly. I am so excited for this project. I feel like it's been my entire two terms trying to make this happen and I want to thank you guys so much for all of your hard work. And one, for dealing with my insistence and, you know, a big thank you to Senator Umberg for helping us also retrieve that grant monies. Thank you so much for all of those community meetings. I know that having all that involvement and that feedback and making the adjustments took a lot of work and I'm just so glad to see this come to fruition for the new council members. My district is one of the lowest median income and also median age, so I don't know that pickleball is all of that appealing to the majority of the residents in my district, in particular, that neighborhood. So that's why the skate park is there and basketball. For those of you who have not been to this park, I highly recommend that you go before. It no longer looks like the way that it does. The biggest concerns that we had with this park is that it's essentially a pocket park and that it's completely closed in and there's very little visibility from anywhere except for the little point of entry in one corner. So I know that it was a huge concern for parents to have their kids go on their own because there's no line of sight. So this park is going to be opened up. Everything's going to be on the periphery rather than in the center. Right now, it's like a little hump and everything's on the top of the hill. And so it makes it really hard for you to see because of the elevation. So I highly recommend that you take a visit to look at that park so you can have some historical context from what it's before and after, right? And again, just thank you so much to staff. I cannot be happier. This looks amazing. If there's any way to incorporate the community with some sort of art or something, just so that they can have, like mark their stamp and have some involvement, I think that would be really cool, particularly for this neighborhood. And in regards to the security, I don't know how possible it is to add that in. I know that we're on tight budget and that we presented a particular set of parameters. I don't know that we're able to move that around and I don't want to remove anything else from here because I'm already really sad about the splash pad, but if it's possible, great. If not, that's something that maybe we can agendize and provide city dollars to do at a later point. The other, only other thing that I wanted to mention is perhaps this is a great opportunity for us to use our bulletin boards to try to convene some sort of neighborhood watch and have our community be more vigilant. I think when they have this new park, they're going to have so much more pride in their community and they're going to want to take care of it. And so perhaps this is a great way for District Six to finally have its own little meeting area and place for it to congregate and then create a community neighborhood watch because I know that we don't really have that here in District Six. This is our only park, so this would be a great opportunity to start that. Thank you.
I've got one quick more thing. And I, and I think I might have heard it, but just one of the frequent complaints I get, especially with a pool going in, is it's never open. You know, it's never open. So, you know, it would be a shame that we have a brand-new, nice pool and all this and we don't have the people, the lifeguards and, you know, things necessary to keep the pool open. So it'd be nice if we could focus, and not just on that one, all the pools in the city. It'd be nice if we had hours that could, are conducive to public use, more so than just a few hours here and a few hours there, you know. So anyway, that's all.
Do you guys still have something to finish up?
Yes, we still have more presentations. Sorry. Okay, so I'll just quickly go over the timeline. We do have a couple other projects to share with you, but I do appreciate everybody's feedback and we'll definitely be meeting with the architects later this week to follow up on some of the recommendations. So just really quick, the project timeline. So as our architect mentioned, we are in the 90% construction document review right now and the, we're anticipating that we'll be releasing the bid package by July of this year and awarding the construction contract in August. Then we'll be able to break ground in September of 2024 and anticipate full completion of the project by fall of 2025. So with that, I'll move on to the rest of the presentation. All right. The city was awarded a Community Project Fund grant through the Department of Housing and Urban Development for a total of one amount of $1 million. These funds will be used for park improvements at three city parks, Jardín de los Niños, Hester Basin Park, and West Haven Park. The city contracted RMA Landscape Architects to prepare the construction plans for all three city parks. And with that, I'll go on to Jardín de los Niños. So Jardín de los Niños is located in the Buena Clinton neighborhood on Kille Avenue along a green belt that wraps along the street. What you're seeing here is a preliminary design of the new colorful garden-themed playground that will replace the current park playground and surface. We will be using the existing footprint, which is a limited space, but the design makes most use of that space with various play elements and equipment. What you're seeing next is Hester Basin Park. It is primarily a county-owned park with current park playground equipment and restroom building located on city property. This is a preliminary design also with new playground equipment that will use the same footprint as the existing playground area. We are currently working with the architect and playground manufacturer to make sure that all the necessary safety improvements are made to the walkways around the current playground area. There will be play elements for all abilities as part of the commitment to have all-inclusive play areas. So it's almost done, but this is what the design will look like. Moving on, we're also going to be remodeling the restrooms. This is also a preliminary design of the new prefabricated park restrooms that will be replacing the existing restroom building located west of the playground area. There will be four stalls in both men's and women's restroom to serve the number of residents that attend to this park. And then lastly, with that funding, we are also going to be renovating the park restrooms at West Haven Park. This will also be prefabricated park restroom building that will be located north of the current location closer to the playground area. There will be two stalls for both men and women restrooms. All right. And just quickly, other improvements in progress. Staff is currently working on the specs for a new AV system for the ballroom of the community meeting center. Once final specs are ready, a bid package will be released for 30 days. Staff anticipates that the bid will be released this summer. And then our Public Works team is working on pool plastering, which will be completed sometime this month or by June for both Magnolia Park and East Gate Park. And then lastly, we are working on exterior security cameras that were budgeted for the current fiscal year for both the Sports and Recreation Center at Garden Grove Park and Magnolia Park. The cameras will be monitored by staff inside of the gym and inside of the Family Resource Center. We're currently working on the installation schedule, which is expected to be completed by the end of next month. And with that, that concludes our presentation. So any additional questions? I quickly went through those since we took a little while on Woodbury Park.
Go for it.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment. Obviously, two parks in District Five, Hester Basin and West Haven Park. Very excited to see both of them getting some love. I think it's extremely important to know that as a council, we understand that we invest, or when we invest in our parks, we're investing in families. And obviously, I could start singing Whitney Houston. I will not, but the children are our future. And so I think, you know, just being able to support families and showcase quality of life and the importance of it. East Garden Grove, District Six and Five are both very dense. And for a lot of residents, their parks are their backyards. And so I think this will be very appreciated by many residents. And it's great to see the upgrades in the bathrooms. Hopefully, there'll be plenty of lighting and security moving forward, but this is very exciting to see just such an emphasis being put on quality of life in parks in Garden Grove. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, I just would be remiss to not thank our former Congress member Lou Correa for the funding for these projects. I also have to apologize for my persistence, I'll call it persistence, in bothering him and his office and his staff to ensure that we did receive this funding. This is a big day for District Six and District Five as well. A lot of these parks are neighboring, are bordering my district, so I felt it very important that we receive funding so that, you know, someone across the street can walk over and also enjoy the facilities because there is a lack of parks at the northern part of my district. So I'm really excited for that and I know that there is a little bit more of complication with Hester Basin because it is majority county-owned, but I'm glad that we're able to receive funding and for our little section of it and make sure that it gets revitalized because it's heavily utilized. There's always little kids running around and playing, but it's, it's, it doesn't look very, very nice and I don't know how safe it is anymore. So I'm just so excited to see that happening and again, want to extend my utmost gratitude to both Senator Umberg and to Congressman Correa for putting up with me. I will be calling them again though because now I want money for a splash pad. But for, for the work that they also did in championing City of Garden Grove, their advocacy for our city doesn't go unnoticed.
Quick question. This can relate to the camera that we talked about earlier. So I know I asked our staff about putting the camera at Garden Grove Park. That's part a lot of people use, you know, for big events and we still could not do that, but how could we get, you know, like some other part that get five, four camera? And so we talked about this several times and so I do want to know what can we do to get there? And the second thing, you kind of relate to the project earlier, the video, the camera is something we talked many times. And so for this project, why wasn't it in that work scope? Was that because our staff didn't ask or because the developer or the contractor didn't want to add in there?
Are you, so if I'm, if I'm understanding your question, why haven't we had cameras prior to, and we're coming back with cameras now at Garden Grove Park? In, for this particular project, these, these are cameras that are going to be going on the outside of the gymnasium, which we've found to be a troublesome area for the most part. And one of the reasons that they're going specifically in there is because there was already conduit for it. The, when that project was originally designed over, well, must have been 20, no, 13, 14 years ago, they did have the foresight to put the conduit in there for potential cameras or other items that might be needing, might be needing some sort of fiber optic equipment going through it. So why wasn't it a part of the original plan? I'm not sure. It was before myself, but my guess would be budget. And two, also, the, back then, I would imagine that we weren't having the issues that we're having now. You know, once you created a big building and you put bathrooms on the outside of the, of the building, what was originally the thought that it would provide restrooms for the community has now provided a sanctuary for just things not to go very well in that area. So, so, you know, now we're here and so now we're, we've got some budget allocated to us and that's why we're putting those cameras out there. We have cameras on the inside and that was done a few years back and now we're putting cameras on the outside.
Yeah. One of the items, and I'm glad you covered the upcoming projects there in that slide, because one of the items that we're actually, it's actually on consent tonight, is to redo the pool at East Gate Park.
Yes.
And unfortunately, it's under consent and I don't want to pull it, so I, I wouldn't be able to make any comments, but because you brought that slide in, it kind of opened the door for me. So with that being said, you know, I'm sure it'll get approved. We're in the park mindset tonight as a council, so. But with that being said, I wouldn't like to see it, the construction interfere with the opening of the pool this year.
That's, that's something that we're trying to work with, with the contractor. Unfortunately, there's so many pieces that have to kind of come together and timelines and insurances and all that stuff to try to, try to make it fit and go and.
Especially during the hot summer months, August.
I totally agree with you and we're going to do our best to try to push it along as quick as possible.
Either that or wait until after.
I think we had that consideration. Unfortunately, I think the condition of the pool needs, needs to have, it needs to be addressed right now, yeah.
Okay, and that, and that's all. I, yeah. And, and I do share Councilwoman Tran's sentiments about the, you know, I think maybe as a body, we, something we should consider is maybe a resolution or something that any new park construction have camera consideration automatically. I mean, like Director Montanjas just told us, you know, things have changed and it's kind of expected now. I think a lot of the parents, especially the ones with small kids and stuff, kind of expect that there would be some kind of surveillance cameras or something in there to, to kind of provide that added layer of security and safety for them. And so I think maybe we should have that on a mindset. Anytime there's a new park construction, we at least consider that. But, you know, I, I'll fall short of pushing that tonight, but I think we should consider it. That's all. Thank you.
All righty. John Janet, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Much appreciate it. All right. I'm going to go out of order again with respect to some folks who've been waiting patiently in the back. We'll pull item five from the consent calendar, if I may. Can I get, and this is, yeah, thank you. This is the approval of the MOU with GGUSD for the regional canine training facility at Pioneer Park.
I'm sorry, yes. Item five is approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Garden Grove Unified School District for the establishment of a regional canine training facility at Pioneer Park for a pilot period of approximately 24 months and approval of a SEQA exemption. And Assistant City Manager Matt West will provide that report.
Yes, thank you. Just real briefly, presentation, and then I'm going to ask the clerk to share. So this goes back to January 9th of this year. City Council voted unanimously to place for discussion at a subsequent meeting the feasibility of establishing a police canine training facility at Pioneer Park. Subsequently, on January 23rd, Council did direct staff to explore the feasibility of this. So as mentioned, the City of Garden Grove's Police Department has identified a local and countywide need for the creation of a centrally located regional police canine training facility. The city currently has a joint use agreement with the Garden Grove Unified School District at, on Pioneer Park on Chapman Avenue east of Harbor, where a portion of the area has been determined by both agencies to be suitable for a pilot program. So the proposed regional canine training facility concept would create an opportunity to train and exercise support service canines and apprehension canines and is proposed to initially consist of equipment that would be stored in storage containers where, when not in use. Examples of the portable equipment include, but are not limited to hurdles, tunnels, blinds, hill climb A-frames and high-fine ladders. As you can see on the plan, a portion of the area, this is actually southeast portion of the park, would also require the installation of temporary fencing, some concrete and utilities to procure the pilot period. And so I'm pleased to announce that on May 7th, the Garden Grove Unified School District approved the memorandum of understanding for the establishment of a pilot program for up to 24 months. And if in the future it's determined that a permanent facility is appropriate, future improvements and funding sources will need to be identified and an amendment to the joint use agreement will also likely be necessary for the permanent facility. So it's recommended that the City Council authorize the City Manager to execute the MOU with the school district, including any non-substantive modifications, direct staff to implement it, the establishment of the pilot regional canine training facility, and find that the approval of the MOU is exempt from SEQA. And the three officers shown here on the screen are in the back and I'm sure they can answer questions as long as they're handlers and can answer any questions if you have any at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
So much. This is a fantastic evening to be able to support what I think is a fantastic collaboration and community partnership program and pilot. I think when we were just talking about all the different parks, we went through so many of them. And then there's little old Pioneer Park and what are we going to do with that park? And there's a lot of... old Pioneer Park, and what are we going to do with that park? And there's a lot of very dense communities in and around that park, and they deserve some love and attention, too. And I've had many conversations with John Montancho, our Director of Community Services and others, just about the uniqueness of this park, the need for better safety in this park, and how do we activate it? And so as we're coming up with those ideas and looking at what we can do for Pioneer in the future, I think that this is such a unique way to activate this park, to protect it and to help protect it safety-wise as well. So it was such a pleasure to be able to bring this forward after having this idea and this concept brought to me by our school resource officers and their K-9 team who are in the back of the room this evening. They were so passionate and so excited about what this could not only bring for the K-9 teams here in Garden Grove, but in the county and really in all of Southern California. I think this really sort of puts our department on the map as to what we can do to help collaborate and, and bring forth some training for our K-9 officers and show their importance to us and the community. So I'm excited to see the collaboration, the teamwork that it's taken to get to this point. Everybody was really excited and really wanted to have a hands-on approach to what we could do here, and I'm really excited to see this flourish, and I think it's just fantastic. I had a great conversation with our Southwest Carpenters to see if maybe they could also help partner with building some of the equipment that will be used at this training facility. So it'll be great to be able to partner with them again. I know Southwest Carpenters have been wonderful in Garden Grove. They build our Adirondack chairs that we have and have been very supportive of community events and just community projects. So I think this is really an all-hands-on-deck situation, and I'm very excited to support this tonight. I'd love to make the motion. Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. Can we call for a vote? It's not working. Still thinking about it. It's not working.
Oh. Technical. Oh, there we go. Received. Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Alrighty, thank you. Okay, we're back on track, so now we will head into oral communications. I only have one card for general oral communications. Alejandro Cabatos? Is there an Alejandro to speak under oral communications? Alejandro? No? Just, just that one. These are all for public hearing item.
Good evening, Mayor Jones. I'm here to address the parking issue on Alwood, Cole, and Blanch. The parking on these streets is, it's oversaturated to the point where everyone's double parking and parking illegally. I've came and I spoke about it before, and, you know, the city's quick to, to jump on these violations. You know, I've seen the code enforcement, you know, enforce these, but the city doesn't address the ADA violations all on Gilbert, Gilbert, Cole, Alwood, and just all those streets, all the ADA violations on, basically up from Chapman to Garden Grove, you know. Nobody does any, there's not enough ramps, there's not enough sidewalk, there's no sidewalks, there's no four-foot sidewalks. I got a video of a lady on an electric buggy driving in the middle of the road. You know, it's not safe. And I've came in the past to address this and come up with a solution to handle the parking solution on these streets and the ADA compliance on these streets. I propose widening the street three to four feet and put diagonal parking, and I've surveyed the streets in person and on Google Maps. All these streets can be widened without affecting the properties, apartments, or homes themselves. Then also, the current ramps don't have the proper slope or the detectable warning surfaces or designated crossing. I've seen disabled people and handicapped people on electric chair, electric wheelchairs just drive in the middle of the road, and I want to see if, you know, I could do something to get this addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, my name's Nicholas Dibbs. I'm a teacher and educator. One thing you learn as a teacher, especially those who study history, is we study history so we don't repeat the mistakes of the past, and I want to bring up an issue that I've brought up in the past, which is the situation keeps getting worse and worse in Palestine and Gaza. We need to, all of you, including those watching this broadcast, need to go to democracynow.org, veteransforpeace.org, and jewishvoiceforpeace.org. There have been a number of cities that have passed resolutions. The situation, here, here's what it comes down to, council members, is silence is complicity. The Holocaust happened in Germany during World War II because people remained silent and didn't take action. Now we have a genocide that's continuing. The city of Long Beach had the courage, their city council unanimously passed a ceasefire resolution in November. Pasadena and, and other cities, including Stanton, passed a resolution in December. I've been here before, and, and so I'm here, the situation has gotten worse, and back on April the tenth, Colonel Lawrence Wilkerson, who was the Chief of Staff to General Colin Powell when he was Chairman of the Joint Chiefs, and his Chief of Staff when he was Secretary of State, has spoken out against what's going on. Okay, then we go to Cindy McCain, the wife of Senator John McCain, who is in charge of the World Food Program, and she's saying what's going on is wrong. Then you had Albert Einstein weigh in on this. After the village of Dariusin was massacred by Zionist terrorists on April the tenth, April the ninth, nineteen forty-eight, and he writes from Princeton University, "When, when a real and final catastrophe should befall us in Palestine, the first responsible for it will be the British, and the second responsible for it, the terrorist organizations built up from among our own ranks. I'm not willing to support anybody associated with these criminal people." So he spoke out against the Zionist movement and against what it was going on and what has been going on. So I, from nineteen seventeen to nineteen forty-eight, the British were in charge, and then after that, the US. And so this is being done, I, I, I stand in solidarity with peaceful protesters at our universities and who have the right to peacefully protest, and when they try to peacefully protest, there's always somebody in the crowd that's going to try to mess it up, and then the police get involved and the protesters get mistreated. But in any case, we have a crisis here. This is funded by our own tax dollars, and we as a, you as a council, and we as the citizens of Garden Grove have an obligation to speak out against genocide and the use of murder and, and collective murder of thousands of people. There's six hundred thousand children in Rafah that are besieged right now. Six hundred thousand children, and most of the victims have been women and children. So the Israelis are deliberately targeting them. I'm asking you for a ceasefire resolution. Get this on the agenda, please. Thank you.
All right, that's all, okay, you're submitting one right now? That's all the public speaker cards I have for general comments under oral communications. I do have a number that are specifically for the public hearing item. Okay, please come on forward.
Hello, my name's Philip Buck. I'm a Garden Grove resident for thirty-four years, and I'm a little bit, I'm great to hear about all this stuff with the parks, very exciting. But I'm also concerned with the parks. I saw how we put a new firehouse on the park down there on, on West Street, and so we lost some of our, our park area there. I used to fly kites there all the time, and now it's a lot shorter, so it's a lot more difficult. And then you're talking about putting this K-9 thing in another park, and, and I see the new building coming up here in a park here, and I'm just really concerned that all these parks are disappearing, and we don't have that many parks to start with. And that's, that's a huge concern for me. So, you know, we have that area that used to be the, the golfing range over behind the Chapman and Harbor. Maybe that might be a spot where we can add a park. That's, it's empty, not being used for anything at the moment, but I think if we keep taking away from the parks, we need to keep adding to them, and, you know, we need to have more areas for people to spend time and not play in the middle of the street, right? So thank you for your time. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That is all the cards I have for oral communications, so we will close oral communications. We will recess and go to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Bredeham?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen Peñalosa?
Here.
And Vice Chair O'Neill? Is away from his chair. And Chair Jones?
Here.
Okay, we already did oral communication simultaneously. Consent is just one item received and filed from the last meeting. Can I get a motion? Called to vote?
Motion received. Six yes votes with Councilmember O'Neill absent.
Alrighty, any matters? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to City Council. All right, that takes us on to consent calendar. We already did item number five. Call to vote?
Motion received. Six yes votes with Councilmember O'Neill absent.
All right, that takes us on to public hearings. We have two items listed, so item number sixteen.
Item sixteen is adoption of a resolution authorizing an application for and receipt of SB two permanent local housing allocation grant program funds, and we have Timothy Thron here to provide that report.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Purpose of the report before you is to request that the City Council conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding the five-year plan for the use of permanent local housing allocation, otherwise known as PLHA, program funds, and approve the five-year plan for the use of PLHA grant funds, and to adopt a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute the PLHA grant, the PLHA standard agreement, and associated documents. On December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, the city was awarded approximately 5.9 million for the production of affordable housing to households at or below sixty percent of the area median income, operation of the Yale Navigation Center, providing shelter and services to the homeless individuals, and homebuyer activities that include offering down payment assistance loans to low-income households. On December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, HCD released the NOFA for the PLHA program, which allows entitlement jurisdictions to submit a returning application to access their calendar year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two PLHA allocations. To date, the city has expended approximately 2.1 million of our calendar year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty funds on the Orchard Grove development, operations at the Yale Navigation Center, and administrative expenses. Since the city has expended most of our available PLHA funds for calendar year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, then this NOFA allows the city to apply for and access calendar year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two PLHA funds totaling approximately two, 2.5 million. The PLHA NOFA requires the city to submit the approved five-year plan to amend or, I'm sorry, submit the approved five-year plan or amend the plan through this application process. City staff proposes the following amendments to the PLHA five-year plan. Amendment number one, redistributes funding from activity four to activity one, and if you look at exhibit A, there's a listing of all the eligible activities, just for your reference. This amendment will allow the city to expend funds on pre-development, development, acquisition, rehabilitation, and preservation of multifamily affordable housing without requiring the dollar-to-dollar match from the city's low and moderate income housing asset fund. Next, we have amendment two, which reduces the allocation for affordable housing development activities, activity one, and allocates additional funding to homebuyer activities, which is activity nine. HCD recently approved changes to the city's first-time homebuyer program, authorizing the use of PLHA funds to increase the maximum loan amount to one hundred and ten thousand at zero percent interest for down payment assistance. The maximum loan amount available through PLHA to a household is fifty thousand, but we are combining funding sources with Cal Home Funds to provide qualified homebuyers with up to one hundred and ten thousand in assistance. Next, we have amendment number three, which the calendar year twenty twenty PLHA allocation has approximately one hundred and twenty-one thousand of unexpended funds from activity four, and this amendment number three shifts the remaining funds to activity nine to assist additional homebuyers. Amendment number four increases the amount, the income limits for activity nine to one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income in Orange County. This increase from eighty percent AMI to one hundred and twenty percent AMI would allow additional households to qualify for down payment assistance through the city's first-time homebuyer program. And last, we have amendment number five, which increases the income limits for activity one to eighty percent AMI in Orange County. And this adjustment from sixty percent to eighty percent AMI aims to grant the city greater flexibility during negotiations with affordable housing developers regarding affordability thresholds within a project. There is no financial impact to the general fund. This grant application will bring approximately 2.5 million to the city to address the unmet housing needs in our community. Funds will be included as part of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. It is recommended the City Council conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding the five-year plan for the use of PLHA grant funds, and approve the amended five-year plan for the use of PLHA grant funds, and lastly, adopt the resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute the PLHA grant application, the PLHA grant standard agreement, and associated documents. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may ask.
Thanks, Tim, Monica. Any questions, comments, clarifications? This is a public hearing, so we do have to open the public hearing, but at this time you could ask any clarification questions. Just don't deliberate.
Yeah, just a quick question. So, well, actually, say thank to Tim and the staff for thinking it further in term of, you know, it's hard for first-time homebuyer to be able to qualify for that low income and be able to buy a house this high. So it's been for a while, and now you come up with some idea, and with the amendment, hopefully, we will be able to have our resident, you know, with the lower moderate income to be able to own a home. So just want to say thank you for, you know, thinking about it and come up with a solution, and hopefully someone will be able to take advantage of that. That was it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak specifically on item sixteen? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Colleagues? Motion and a second. Called to vote?
Who motioned and who seconded?
George motion. I seconded.
Thank you. Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Do you guys want to keep going, or do you want to take the five?
Keep going. I'm fine. I kind of already went, so.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Okay, item seventeen is adoption of resolutions for approval of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monit- and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, site plan SP 136-2024, variance number V 042-2024, investing tentative tract map number TT 19298 for a 15-unit residential condominium project at 12828 New Hope Street, and the introduction and first reading of an ordinance approving zoning amendment number A 036-2023 and planned development unit number PUD 019-2024. And the ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving One Zoning Amendment Number A-040-2024 to amend the city's official zoning map to change the zoning of an approximately 0.88-acre parcel located on the east side of New Hope Street, north of Garden Grove Boulevard at 12828 New Hope Street. Assessor's parcel number 090-671-07 from R1 Single Family Residential to Residential Planned Unit Development PUD-019-2024, zoning with R3 Multiple Family Residential Base Zone and 2 Residential Planned Unit Development Number PUD-019-2024 to facilitate the development of a 15-unit residential detached condominium project on this subject site." And Mr. Prekechla is here to provide that report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. For your consideration tonight is a recommendation from the Planning Commission for City Council approval of land use actions necessary to develop a 15-unit multiple-family residential project on a 0.88-acre site located at 12828 New Hope Street. The subject site has a general plan land use designation of medium-density residential, which allows multiple-family residential developments and is zoned R1 single-family residential. The property abuts R1 zoned properties to the east, to the north, south, and west across New Hope Street. The subject site is adjacent to the Garden Park Townhome Condominium Development. The site is currently developed with a vacant single-family residence that would be replaced with the proposed residential development. To facilitate the proposed development, an amendment is required to change the zoning of the property from R1 to residential planned unit development with an R3 base zone. The R3 base zoning is consistent with the medium-density residential general plan land use designation, and rezoning of the property would facilitate the development of the proposed project under the proposed planned unit development. The planned unit development would be the residential zoning that establishes development centers for the project. The adoption of the PUD would allow for the project to be more consistent and compatible with the adjacent Garden Park townhomes. Development centers specified in the PUD include but are not limited to setbacks, parking, building heights, and open space requirements. The project density is designed at 17 units per acre, which is less than the 28 units per acre that would otherwise be allowed. The site plan contemplates the construction of 15 detached condominium units along a central drive aisle access from New Hope Street. Each condominium unit would be 1,675 square feet, designed as either a three- or four-bedroom unit with an attached two-car garage, two driveway parking spaces, a covered entry, and a private recreation area. The project would provide a total of 62 total parking spaces, including 30 spaces within the private garages, 30 spaces along the private driveways, and two open guest parking spaces. An open recreational area serving the development would be provided in the southwest corner of the site nearest New Hope Street. The building architecture would feature one of two exterior facade designs, quote-unquote "Spanish" and quote-unquote "Santa Barbara", available in six different color schemes. The municipal code requires all residential planned unit developments to provide a minimum lot size of one acre. The subject lot size is 0.8 acres in size, which is less than the minimum. Therefore, a variance is required for the establishment of the PUD zoning and to allow a deviation from the minimum lot size for the residential PUD. The applicant is requesting approval of a vesting tentative tract map to create a subdivision for the purpose of selling each unit as a condominium. The proposed vesting tentative tract map is in conformance with the proposed PUD requirements for the site, as well as the State Subdivision Map Act. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Based on the initial study and supporting technical analyses, it was determined that all potentially adverse environmental impacts can be mitigated to a level of less than significant. On this basis, a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program have been prepared. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council conduct a public hearing, adopt a resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project, introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance approving the amendments and planned unit development, and then adopt a resolution approving the site plan, the variance, and the vesting tentative tract map subject to the recommended conditions of approval and subject to and contingent upon the adoption and effectiveness of the ordinance approving the amendment and the planned unit development. I would now like to turn the presentation over to the applicant, Mr. Brian Geis, for a few words on the Olson Company and this project specifically.
Thank you, Preet. Brian, if you point it this way? Nope, okay, I got it then.
Okay. All right, well, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Brian Geis. I'm with the Olson Company. And pleased to be here. Thank you, staff, for a great staff report, and welcome to members of the community. I just want to cover a few points tonight regarding the manner before you. And I'd also like to thank Councilmember Klopstein for meeting and engaging directly with the community. We appreciate that. But first, a short bit about the Olson Company. Is this live now, or are you going to be my clicker?
I'll be your clicker.
Thank you, Preet. Appreciate that. So, Olson Company, we specialize in infill housing. We've been working with cities for over 35 years. And this project will be our eighth, if approved, our eighth community here in the city of Garden Grove. We're customer-focused, and we've just been recognized the ninth time with the Alliant Award, which is similar to a J.D. Powers Customer Service Award at a national level, beating out many major public builders. And I was also pleased to meet earlier a member of your, your, excuse me, your code enforcement team, who lives in an Olson house in Compton. And it's nice chatting. He's been with him, with that house for 15 years. Okay, next, please. There we go. I'd like to start with the general plan, just briefly cover how it guided what we're doing here tonight. So, the general plan for the entire Garden Park Townhome community allows a density of 32 homes per acre with three-story building heights allowed. And it's intended primarily for multifamily and apartment development. Next slide. General plan would allow 28 homes by right, and up to 53 units could be built using the state density bonus. With the density bonus, buildings could actually get up to four stories tall using a waiver. And parking could be reduced down to one and a half spaces per unit instead of the 4.1 that we're proposing with our project. After initially considering the 28-home plan, we scaled back to a 15-unit site plan because we felt it was more sensitive to the existing neighborhood. For context, next slide, please. Here are a few pictures of the existing condition. The house has substantially deteriorated, no longer habitable. There's been a bit of vandalism and squatting, and the current owners had to have the police out. Next slide. I just want to touch a little bit on our outreach efforts with the community. We started visiting back a year ago, last May. We made over 26 visits, one-on-one with the community, spoke with 126 residents. 97, when, when having one-on-one conversations with our team, 97 of those residents expressed support for the 15-unit site plan. And we received 27 letters of support, which we've already submitted at Planning Commission. And from these conversations, we learned that neighbors preferred the fewer homes. They liked the single-family homes instead of the townhomes or the apartments. And we also heard some concerns. Concerns were mainly focused on parking, privacy, and building scale, and I want to go through those now. Next slide. Overfill of parking was the biggest concern, and we witnessed this firsthand visiting the community in the evening. To address this concern, our plan really focused on parking. We're providing 62 homes, as Preet pointed out. They're conveniently located onsite in parking spaces, easily accessible to our new homes. We looked back, this is the highest parking ratio we've ever done in a community, at 4.1 spaces per home. In fact, there's more parking spaces than bedrooms, and that's kind of a rare thing as well. The parking provided in the site plan exceeds both R1 and R3 standards, and it will be enforced by the new HOA through the rules and regs and the CCNRs. Next slide. We also heard some concerns about privacy, mainly views between homes. To address this, the new homes are set approximately 75 feet from the existing homes. And the space between homes is buffered, as you can see on the slide, by the drive aisle, a row of private garages, courtyard, backyards, and then the residences. With the separation, as well as the screening afforded by the garages, we feel there will be limited exposure between the homes. And we noted that many existing homes within Garden Park community are set as close as 20 feet apart. So, this seemed reasonable to us to have a 75-foot building separation. Additionally, with the proposed rear yards, residents will be able to add landscaping at their own lot in a manner that will further enhance privacy between the buildings. And as with any new community, homeowners will be able to install window coverings at sensitive locations to provide privacy as needed. Next slide. Building scale was the other concern that we heard about. And to address this, a landscape architect has selected specific trees that will help transition along the New Hope frontage. And the homes facing New Hope have enhanced architecture and, as well as varied setbacks from the street to provide variety and interest. Next slide, we'll go through these quickly, Preet.
Sure, yeah.
Next slide, so we have some of the features in the community. I'm just going to point out, we have enhanced paving at the entry, we have our own mail drop, view fencing along the front, an event lawn for our residents, shade structure, and lounge seating for use. We have our own private sidewalk internal to the project. We'll be planting over 50 new trees. The streets designed with a meandering style to add interest. We have a row of tall screening trees along the east property line. Private rear yards for each residence to provide recreation adjacent to the house. The separation, as I talked about, 75 feet. Screen wall around the perimeter of the community. And finally, the enhanced landscaping along the frontage. And just before closing, I'd like to highlight some of the local benefits as well. For this project, we'll be paying approximately $600,000 in fees, including park fees. So, that's relevant to the other topics tonight. We'll also be generating over $4 million in local economic activity during the construction process, including 60 jobs during that period. And then going forward, just on an annual basis, recurring local economic benefits are projected to be approximately $605,000 annually and 10 full-time permanent jobs. That's according to the National Association of Home Builders. And just to summarize, and I'll wrap up, and we'll be, we'll be done here just briefly. The proposed plan is a much lower-density alternative than what could be built, and it strikes, we think, a very reasonable balance between the new home density and being sensitive to the existing neighborhood. At half the allowed density, fewer people and vehicles will impact the existing community when compared to a potential apartment community. The 62 onsite parking spaces will limit overflow parking onto New Hope. And with 4.1 parking spaces for each home, there are actually more parking spaces than bedrooms, as I mentioned earlier. We will have CCNRs that will enforce parking in the garages and ensuring they're kept available for vehicles to park at all times. And last month at Planning Commission, a question was raised about the potential, since these are single-family homes, if they could be converted into ADUs at the garages. We did look into that, and since the zoning is multifamily, that will allow us to restrict and place a covenant that will prevent anybody from being able to convert to an ADU here. So, in closing, I think that's our last slide, Preet. Let's see if there's anything else there. One more.
One more.
Okay, there we are. I'll note that, as you're aware, city staff and Planning Commission have both recommended approval of this application. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your attention, allowing us to make this presentation tonight. I'll be available to answer questions. And again, thanks, thanks for this time.
Sure, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick comments. I'm councilmember from District 4, but I do get feedback and comments, as well as some emails from residents all around the city. And as you know, our council, we vote citywide on different projects. So, in this case, I did receive an email specific to your project, mostly positive, but they did raise a concern, which you've already addressed tonight, is privacy and landscape, particularly the tall trees, the screen on the east side there. So, my comment is, we appreciate you coming in and developing in our city. It helps us tremendously. So, thank you for that. But on a footnote, please follow through with your already planned landscaping, tree planting, so that the residents there will feel assured that they will have the privacy, which you already know about, the issues been raised. And I forwarded to my staff to follow up, and you might hear from them.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the project, and actually, I think it fits, it's very reasonable. I just want to thank you for scaling it back and not trying to put 100 pounds in a five-pound sack. I think kind of fits the vibe of the rest of the community there. Only having two guest parking spots, though, is a little concerning, but I do get, they all have driveways, so people can park there conceivably. I think you mentioned it, the garages have to be used for parking, correct? That's, that'll be enforced in the CCNRs?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, I know when I was on the Planning Commission, that was one of the things I'm always like, you know, because, because if that's not enforced there, then obviously, it affects the rest of the community, and we have a lot of parking issues, you know.
Yes, I'm aware.
Very good. And again, I echo Councilman Dovin's sentiments. Thank you for choosing Garden Grove.
You're welcome.
May I suggest that we open the public hearing?
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
Close the public hearing and then choose to deliberate, and if you have any follow-up questions, the applicant, after we've conducted the public hearing, then we can bring him back up? Yeah, if you have a clarification question?
Clarification, just on the time you break ground, the construction, duration of construction. What are you anticipating that to be?
Construction duration will be 12 months. And if we're approved this evening, we, we would be conducting demolition starting in July.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I do have about a dozen cards. We'll go three minutes each, so, Rafa Margolin.
Hello, my name is Rafe Margolin. Live at 12794 New Hope. I'm concerned for a lot of things for my neighbors. Except for times of construction, this won't directly affect me, but it's going to affect the privacy. And I know there's going to be that 75-foot setback or whatever, but that doesn't stop somebody from looking down into people's backyards. And it really affects the privacy negatively. Three-story units in our area are not compatible. We have two stories and one stories. They're going to stick out like a, some sort of colored thumb. The parking, we all know, a lot of people drive SUVs. So, even though there's 62 spots, that doesn't guarantee anything. There's enforcement. If anybody's lived in an HOA, all you have to do, it's, they have to notify you, they're going to come over, look at your garage. You get your stuff out of your garage that's in bins, move it into your condo. They check your, you know, condos, see that it's empty, and then they leave. Then you move the bins back out. You park on New Hope, which we have very limited parking. It's going to increase traffic, which we already have issues with. Like said, I don't know where they get the 97 people. I know a lot of people aren't happy. I know we were misled very early on and very much until the last minute that it was going to be no more than two stories, until they came to a HOA meeting and surprised the HOA by saying, "Oh, it's going to be three stories," we decided. So, anyhow, it's, it's not good for the privacy, not good for our community. We remember these things in November. Whoever's running in November, keep that in mind. We will remember. And this is not good for our community. It's not good for Garden Grove. It's not good for anybody. It's not good for Garden Grove, it's not good for anybody.
Thank you.
Steve Magore. Did I do that right?
Yes.
McGowan?
Magoon.
Magoon. Sorry, sir.
Good evening. My name is Steve Magoon. I live at 12916 New Hope Street. My condo is right, or my townhouse is right on New Hope Street, so all this traffic and these skip loaders and dump trucks and cement trucks and so on are going right in front of my place. I understand construction is necessary, I understand we need more housing. I'm pleased that what is permitted, whatever amount of houses that were permitted according to state law and so on, that we're doing much less than that. I do appreciate that a lot. One thing I am concerned about, and I think all of my community is concerned about, of course, is parking. There is not one single parking space left on New Hope for any of these new people to park on that street. If you go there in the evenings, people are parking on the red paint already still now, and if any new people from these 15 new places were to park there, you know, I don't know. It would be unbelievably a mess. A lot of my questions were answered with the pre-presentation, so I'm not going to get into all those things again. One thing I am concerned about, though, is what happens if these plans are not followed? Is there some kind of penalty for the company building this complex if they don't put in all those parking places, or they do something else that we haven't planned on? So I have that question. Can anybody answer that?
We'll take note, we'll get to it.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's all I've got to say, because some of the other questions, again, like I had, we're going to ask, were shown by the construction, or the company, answered by the company, so I'm finished. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Short answer, though, sir, is yes, there is a process that they have to build what was approved. Philip Buck.
Good evening, Philip Buck. I live at 12852 New Hope Street. My biggest concern with this project is the privacy issue. And if you look at the design of the new properties, their kitchen will be facing back south and north to the existing properties in there. So the kitchen is, always has the big window, and you wash your dishes, and you're looking out. I mean, that's what people do. They look out the window, they have a view of some trees or whatever. And so they're going to be on the second floor, looking out their kitchen windows, washing their dishes, whoever, looking right into my living room, right into my bedroom window, you know, right into my property. And so our properties are also designed the same way. We didn't have, when they were built in the 70s, there wasn't another unit there. So our kitchens are all facing the north and the south. So it's the same thing for me, I'm doing my dishes, I have my big giant window there, I'd be looking right at their properties. So it's a constant back and forth, like New York City, too, you know, looking right inside each other's properties. So it's a nice design. I'm not here to stop construction or stop progress, but he does have trees allocated on the east side for privacy. And all I'm advocating is, let's have those same privacy trees on the north and south. Just a gesture of goodwill. And the new people, they're paying almost a million dollars for these new homes, they don't want me peering into their windows either. So it works both ways. It'll be a benefit for us and the new homeowners, you know, to have a little tree privacy in there. 75 feet's not a long way when you're three stories looking down. So a three-story unit looking out the back window, they would be able to see me if I was laying on the floor in my bedroom, because they're going to be looking right down in through our windows. We have large windows. So privacy is really a big concern. And of course, the parking, you know, is horrible. And it's not just us that live in Garden Park townhomes that park there, but people from across the street come in and park on our street, too, with all the apartments. We used to have parking out on Garden Grove Boulevard that was taken away when they did the new construction on the freeway. And ever since then, the parking has been horrible on our street. So anyways, I'm out of time, but that's my concerns. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope we can resolve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Noak Kao.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of council and staff. Thank you for organizing this public hearing. My name's Noak Kao. I live at 12858 New Hope Street, and I do have business here in the city of Garden Grove. And my property is directly facing to the south of the project, adjacent to the south. And I strongly support our neighbor concern that they have presented, and I would like to express my concern about privacy invasion. On page 39, paragraph 2 of the initial study, New Hope and Garden Grove Residential Project, the company mentioned that the adjacent residential structure, north and south of the project, are not expected to have visual impact because the distance from the project site to our buildings is about 36 to 41 feet. But today, tonight, they present some document for 75-feet separation, so I'm not sure, and I was wondering why is the big number, why is it different between the number? And maybe 75-feet separation is the horizontal distance. But our house is one-story, and in, actually, we have the significant visual impact from a window on the third floor of the new house, let's say about 28 feet off the ground, and with the angle of depression, looking down to the ground, about 27 to 29 degrees. So the distance far away, people on the third floor can see now, far to our backyard is around, I say 57 to 61 feet. And my house is one-story, our entire backyard, kitchen, master bedroom, fully exposed to the new community. And they can see everything when we open the backyard door. We cannot keep our door closed all the time. So we cannot avoid the looking down from the third floor to my property. My husband is disabled. Due to his disability, he relies on our backyard for getting sunlight and for the private physical therapy exercise. Having our backyard fully exposed to people would make it difficult for him to feel comfortable and secure while doing the essential exercise. It also negatively impacts our quality of life, our privacy, and limits our outdoor activities. So on page 15, figure number six, conceptual planning plan, the developer proposed planting tree, something pine tree, along the east side of the project to provide the privacy screening for the single-family resident, but unfortunately, we don't have on the south side. So because we do have the significant visual impact, I would like to request Olson Company planting tree along the south side of the project to protect our privacy. Planting tree along outside benefits us, protect our privacy and the new community. So let's say, for example, cypress trees. The cypress trees tall, provide good screening, and it doesn't take up a lot of space. It's achievable, doable to the company. So I would like, members of council.
Please wrap it up.
Yes. I would like council and member take our request into consideration to get the plan revised, planting tree along the south side of the project to protect our privacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin Trung.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Trung. I'm here to inform to you that you are possibly going to be part of destroying a gigantic piece of Garden Grove's history. That piece of history is the past homeowner's camphor tree. It has been with us for over 100 years. Now, if there's a bigger or older tree than that, I would really like to visit it. So I also want to tell you guys that the pictures that Olson provided for you guys of the site are probably correct, but there are more to it. There's also a large tree filled with beautiful parrots, and there's also, there's also like a lot of animals there and plants there that we all used to enjoy when he gave them up. I also want to remind you that the decision is in your hands. The decision of cutting down a majestic, beautiful, and wonderful tree to create houses. And there are also difficulties with creating the houses. Thank you.
Mariani Joseph.
My name is Mariani Joseph. I have lived in the south side of a fresh property for about seven years. First, I would like to clear up the misleading in Olson's last presentation. It mentioned around, it's mentioned 97 people from our community approve the construction of the three-story houses. That is not true. False statement. When Diane asked my husband for signature, she said it for participation in the survey, and she ended up using it as our proof, approval, to build the three-story. So it's really false statement. I had the same concern as other residents, like traffic, parking, but my biggest concern is privacy. Building three-story houses in the middle of two-story and one-story houses is not fair. They can see through to our rooms, kitchen, bathroom. Say, if they lay down on our bedroom floor, they can see it very clearly. From their plan, they're going to plant the tree along the east side. So why they not plant in our south and north side? I know Olson want to be a good neighbor and have a good reputation, so now we urge Olson to plant the cypress tree along the north and south wall. It will provide perfect privacy, not only for us, but also for the new residents. I have some picture that I took in New Hope Street of the cypress tree. It's really a make-up perfect screen and privacy. And also, if you see here, it only takes a little space to plant it. Many of our neighbor feel the same way about the cypress tree, so I really hope that the city council will work with Olson to make it happen. Again, it's very sad to see the beautiful and huge, more than 100-years-old tree part of the Garden Grove history gets cut down. But if Olson plants those cypress tree, it will ease our pain by seeing new tree growing. And at the same time, it'll solve privacy issue for us and Olson's future buyers. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tom Trung.
I totally support my neighbor request to have a cypress tree stand on the north and south side. That would definitely add to the privacy of your new customer, as well as our neighborhood. And I'd just like to mention that there's a misrepresentation on Olson Park. When you show what's going to be replaced on Freckland, you just show a pile of garbage. Because it's a beautiful camphor tree on Freckland, it's more than 100-years-old. It's totally beautiful. When the people go home, they look at the tree, they just have a sense of peace, you know, of relaxing, and such a sense of beauty with this tree. So on the day that you cut the tree, basically, you're going to hurt a lot of people feeling. I mean, you're going to do a 9/11 on the spirit. Basically, you're going to destroy their feeling, their spirit. There's a lot of hurt feelings are going to happen. So I'm suggest to Olson, how you would address it, I would suggest that you, if you have to go to it, use a harvest tree, use a piece of wood of the tree to create a sort of memorial to honor the memory, the spirit of Fred, that gentleman that used to live there, and to honor the spirit of that piece of land. That's a spirit of kindness and gentleness that's been there more than 100 years. Okay, then, before I start to show, as if I talk too much about the tree, let me tell you. Last weekend, I walked down Newport Beach, okay, a couple blocks from the, I saw the huge, on the big street, there's a big sign that's saying, you know, whip the tree on it, and they say, what? Stop the murder. Okay? That's just about cutting the tree on Newport Beach. I'm not going that far, but I'm saying, you know, do something to address this, and it would be, it would be a closure to the community. When you cut out the tree, and it also provide a sense of connection to your new customer. They have a sense of history of Garden Grove, right? I know we do care about history, this community history go back over 100 years, okay? They got a sense of connection to history, it would be a selling point as well to your customer. Okay? So in connection, in conclusion, you know, I'm just a little voice here, but you know, your customer is going to walk around, check online, you know, and talk to the neighborhood, you know, how do you feel about this community? What is the spirit here? Okay? And whatever we say, whatever little feedback we say, it might tip the scale, you know, in their decision whether or not they buy or not to buy. So I appreciate your patience and listen to me, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Last card I have is Kristalyn Boss.
Hello, thank you for having us all here. The pro and con of going last is, I can just echo everything that everyone else said. Main concerns, oh, I've been a homeowner at 12856 for one year, just celebrated our one-year anniversary. Dream come true to buy a home here. We're so happy, we love it. It's the most beautiful. As everyone has said, the trees are stunning. I've took pictures of the poppies. I mean, it's just beautiful there. Major concern, the trees, like everyone has mentioned, only allocated on the east side. Garden Park townhomes, which are all of my neighbors here, are on the south and north side with no tree indications in the plans. Big concern of toddler, you know, as everyone's mentioned, the privacy is a big concern to all of us, so advocate for more plans for trees. Also, the parking has been an issue, a topic for all of us. They have allocated four for each home plus two guests. I'd like to mention that their plans do remove four parking spots from New Hope. So from the public street, their driveway and the red zones will remove four spots that we, as an entire neighborhood, are using on a public street. As my neighbor mentioned, we were misled, in my opinion, by the PR team that came by. They did tell me and my husband both that the signatures were solely confirmation that we have heard the plans, not that we were in agreement. So I do feel it's been a little bit misleading, which has been unfortunate. The construction hours are a bummer for all of us. I'm not sure much can be changed about that. But I do want to mention that the photos that were presented, unfortunately, I'm sure they're accurate, they're the inside of the home, I don't know, I don't see it, and I directly back up to it. But there are the most stunning trees and poppies, and we all so sad to see all of that go. But I do appreciate all of the open communication that we've had and the opportunities for all of us to be able to speak our voices, and for you to coming out to our neighborhood and speaking with us, too. So that's all. Thanks.[1796.33]
Kind of a summary of everything I've heard. Most are actually in favor of the project. They would like some concessions with privacy trees and other safety protocols, but from the gist of it, I think they're, and most of them are bummed out about the construction, which unfortunately, you know, with any new project, there's gonna be a time of construction and some heartache there. When I was on the planning commission, sometimes we'd get these kind of issues would come up and especially with elevated structures. And usually, the applicant would be amenable to some of these concessions, especially on the third floor in this case. I, you know, the, the bottom floor really is just a garage in this particular project from, I mean, I think there's a stairwell that accesses, but for the most part, it's a garage. But on the third floor, it is fairly elevated and I do see some legit privacy concerns from the community, even though there is a 75% setback, or 75-foot setback, which is actually a pretty decent setback. But what I've seen other developers do is they would raise the windows on those upper floors to about five or six foot tall. So, they're providing light in for the homeowners, they're, you know, providing that, but it's not easy for the homeowner to like look down into the yards and that kind of stuff. I don't know if that's a solution in this type of a situation. Maybe we could ask the applicant, I don't know if it's appropriate.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest, before we really deliberate, we should maybe ask if the applicant cares to come back forward or maybe address some of the concerns that you heard or...
Can I see the renderings again on the north and south sides again?
Yeah.
Yeah, please come forward.
Yeah, I was raising my hand to ask that question before we get into a debate and start arguing amongst each other. Can you just let us know, will you be willing to plant trees on the north and south end? Because that would save us probably two hours of battling it out here. Or what other concessions or thoughts that you have to appease some of the concerns that these residents have before we get into a battle up here? Because I, it's late, I'm tired, I've got a baby waiting for me, I need to go pump. So, the quicker we can get through this, the better, so we can address those questions. I also just wanted to make a comment that I know the townhomes across the way, they're, the way that they're, like they avoid most privacy issues, I'm sure there's still some, is that they're like facing each other, but the windows are on the opposite end so that they're not looking into each other. So, if there's a way to reconfigure or whatever it is you're about to make comments on, that would be great too.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I appreciate the opportunity to answer some of the questions. I've spoken with the Tryon family and we've talked about trees. The reason we're putting trees on the east end is because we don't have the 75 feet from the homes on that, on that end. And that north and south, we do have a pretty significant separation. And the, the trees are not really in our control because it's gonna be private backyards and we don't have the ability to irrigate them. We could plant them and they could come out. And I guess the other major issue is that the height and the trees are not gonna really deal with that issue for a long time. We think blinds are a much more immediate and effective solution. And we would be willing, we were just chatting tonight, we'd be willing to add blinds on all the third-floor bedroom windows in the new homes and, and place a covenant in the CCNRs that those blinds must remain in place. We think that'd be the most effective. And I do want to address the removal of the large tree, the camphor tree. It is a beautiful tree. It's about 15 feet in diameter. I hate to see it go. It's a hardwood tree and unfortunately, it has not been maintained and it's a real safety hazard. If the tree were to remain in place, I don't believe it could be used or you could use the area around it. It'd be in a high-wind situation, it's very dangerous. It just hasn't been pruned. The house was not maintained, it was allowed to really fall into disrepair. And speaking with the Tryon family, I mentioned to them that we've been in touch with Street Tree Revival up in Anaheim. They harvest urban street trees. They've agreed to mill the wood so that we can use it for a park bench. And we're happy to place a memorial, a story, something on that bench honoring Fred Brugeman. And we'll work with the HOA board to figure out what would be appropriate there. And that, that bench can be either in our community or donated to the Garden Park Townhomes for them to put wherever they like.
Well, get back to the question. Can we go back to that slide? Is it possible to go to where the, the one that had the 75-foot distance between, yeah, elevating the, the windows to a degree where they're not, I mean, they're functionable, but they're putting in light? Because those are gonna be primarily bedrooms up there anyway, right? But they're not down at four foot or three foot, they're, they're raised, so they're doing their job, but they're not, it makes it a little more cumbersome for the, for the person to look down into somebody's yard, they have to really, you know, make the effort. Is that something that's doable in this situation or...
It's, it's difficult. We do have to meet egress requirements. If your code team was here, they would understand egress is the ability to get out of a window in a fire or an emergency situation. But I can, I can tell you this, Councilman, we will look at the plan. And if there are windows that are not required for egress, then we can modify the sill heights, we'd be happy to do that.
I think that would probably go a long way to appeasing some of the folks. Now, on the lot, I was looking at, and that's when my computer died, I was trying to get the map up of the thing. The lot line ends at the garage entrances, that's what I'm assuming on, and you probably have to look up here to see it. That's where the, the property line kind of ends.
That's the backyard, so what you're seeing is the top, the north end of our new home is a, is a downstairs flex room and then you have a backyard that's 10 to 15 feet deep.
Okay, but where it actually says courtyards, where the word courtyards is?
Oh, those are the existing courtyards for the garden park, private rear yards.
Oh, I see, I see. So, that, you couldn't maintain a, put like a little bed on each one of those to put a tree or something, community could water it type of thing, between each garage?
That's in the existing private.
I see, I can, okay, that, that's kind of where...
I mean, they could do that now on their own.
Sure, but there's no, yeah, I see what you're saying, there's no way to...
And there are a lot of trees in those courtyards right now.
Yeah. How about opaque in the windows?
That's a possibility. It's a, it's real, a real negative for the homeowner moving in to not be able to see out of their windows ever. I mean, that's a permanent solution.
Right.
So, we would not, we would not want to do that.
Alright, thank you.
Is there a possibility of staff, I can't see it here in my paper, if there are elevation view of the north and south side of this project that I can see where the windows are placed in a rendering drawing? There's no...
Yeah, there isn't one.
There is one for the north and south, I only see the east and west.
As far as an actual elevation, so there should be in the plan set as part of the agenda packet, there should be elevations for all sides of the building.
Yeah, I've got duplicate copies of pages too.
Yeah, no, I know that, I have to get it to online. I thought maybe they could bring something up on the screen so the whole room...
Yeah, I don't have a slide specifically for them, fortunately. But if you look at, in the agenda packet, in the plan set, it's A9 and A10 that show those elevations, what it looks like from the rear.
Okay, it would have been nice to be able to show that to the public and see what the north and south side of the actual rendering is. There's no way we can bring that up?
I don't have it here.
No, I know, I'm looking, I'm looking for it, but I'm saying, good for everyone to see it.
Well, if we can act, if we can hear the clerk connect this...
That's what I mean, so if I can do it, they should. Just want to show the public the windows, the rendering of the north and south elevation looks like.
Come on. There we go. Yeah, we'll just go through there. Okay. Should be the attachments, yeah. Alright, thanks.
Page 12.
Yeah, page 12. Alright, so, in, in this view, this is one example, so this would be, the bottom left would be the, the rear of the unit.
Thank you for bringing that up, that really helps, I think everybody just get a visual.
And that's literally gonna be 75 feet away from the property line and then the setback of the other property, so you're looking at close to 100 feet from the next, right?
There's basically an alley or a street, garages of the existing and then, and then their unit, the existing units, right?
Okay, oh, because they're backed up, yeah.
And one side evidently is two-story and one side is one-story, is that right? Or am I wrong?
The end units on the garden park, the, the end units on the end of the buildings are single-story and then the interior units are two-story.
So, you would be agreeable to elevate the windows where you could on the third floors?
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that and see what could be done. I can tell you the two large windows that you see on the third story are egress windows. That's a safety and a code issue.
Yeah, if there's a fire, they gotta be able to...
Like you said, blinds might be the best option.
Steph?
Thank you for bringing that up, by the way. I'm sorry if I got a little excited there. So, I had, obviously, early on, meetings with the developer and I've met with the community. I've attended and organized a lot of community meetings well before my time on council and meeting with the residents in Garden Park. 30-plus, I think, came to that community meeting and spoke very eloquently and I appreciated your time. You're a very tight-knit community and neighborhood and I valued your, your time and your conversation. Obviously, there are some discrepancies on what is right and what is wrong and what is needed and what isn't. Some of you feel misled, some of you want more privacy, some of you are concerned about parking, some of you need to maybe see a deeper rendering or understanding of what these windows could be and how they could be sloped differently or, or so forth. So, I, I feel like there's, there's a lot of people that have come to this meeting tonight, a lot of people that I've spoken with. I want you to know that I appreciate your voice and I have heard you. So, is there a possibility of, instead of, I, I don't want to just say, can you go and do this and vote on that without knowing what could potentially be brought back to us or brought to the public? So, I guess my question is, is there a way for the residents that are here tonight to be able to sit down with the developer and discuss those issues and maybe see it played out on paper? And then that comes back to us and once we know that that has happened? Because I know there wasn't a community meeting and I do feel like that is an integral and important part of any process like this, especially when a project is so close-knit to your homes specifically. So, I don't know if that's at all possible, I don't know if that's something this council would entertain this evening, but I would like to see that flushed out before I vote on this item.
I'll second that motion with a friendly amendment to make it more specific and say, can we please have this item come back to council after there has been a community meeting and with changes, for us to see the side-by-side changes so we know what has been changed from the original to what you're gonna present as far as accommodating the concerns of the community.
It actually sounds like they're really close. I mean, I didn't hear anyone say that, I, you know, project, I mean, they just want a few concessions here and there, so they, it might be something that...
I appreciate that, I need to see that before I vote on this item.
If I may...
I want to make it a 7-0, so if we could just have it come back in two weeks with, that would be, or, sorry, not two weeks, probably take a while.
But specifically, what is it they're supposed to accomplish with that delay? Just the movement of window sills?
I want to see that conversation happen as well. I want, I want to understand and feel that they've been heard directly with the developer and I want to see the placement of the window change. I need to see that on paper before I can go on this item.
And that makes sense, because a lot of them feel like maybe the process wasn't right with their signatures, maybe things were not put out, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to give my own two cents on that too, because I don't necessarily concur with the need for a delay.
I appreciate, and, and we did learn a lesson and in terms of how to approach this community. I think we might look at it differently going forward. But we did spend a lot of time talking one-on-one. And one-on-one conversations are often different than group conversations. You hear different things one-on-one. That said, we are on a tight timeline with our contract and our escrow. And to facilitate a vote this evening, we would be willing to install trees in the private backyards and we would be willing to meet with tomorrow with representatives from the board, just to flush that out as a follow-up. And like I said, we would be willing as, as well tonight to commit to putting blinds in all of the new third-story windows to address that concern. I, I don't know if that's acceptable, but we think that would go a long way in, in just expediting this matter so we don't have to come back in two weeks.
I mean, that's literally everything they ask for.
Oh, good point. We're gonna be at the second here, a second reading, so we can bring those plans back. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm comfortable with that, I just wanted to make an additional comment. I don't, does anyone have any questions for the developer before I tell him he can sit down? Because I just want to make comments that he doesn't have to be standing for.
No questions, but just a quick comment for me and then I'll be done for the night. But it sounds like, yeah, that the trees in the private backyards and the blinds, to me, are the only option. Again, you have to remember, this builder by right could build a lot of units and they've done a lot of work to this point. Not that I'm supporting the builder over the community and I, I think we should take a pause and, and have the community engage a little bit more, but, or if we can vote it tonight with, with the trees and the blinds, I think as a building, as a builder, that makes, that makes sense because of everything you've already accomplished in your timeline.
We still have the public hearing open, so it becomes anxious.
Oh, it's still open, I'm sorry.
Joe, yeah. Joe, Joe potentially has a comment, you potentially have a comment unless you'd like to let him sit down and then we close the public hearing formally and then...
Yeah, let's, I think, and I don't think we need to, we could close the public hearing probably if no one else wants to speak or deliberate.
Are either of you have a question for this gentleman?
I just had a suggestion, I can wait for the lady to go first.
Yeah, so, no more questions, we could close the public hearing and then deliberate?
Do you have a question for him before we...
No, I don't have a comment, no.
Okay.
Well, I could speak, yeah. I was just gonna say, I could speak my comment really quick. So, based on what I see, I paid attention, seemed like some of the residents liked the idea that, you know, it's gonna look nice and based on the thing that you said, you have, you, you could build a lot more, but you have, you consider the community. And I felt that they're paying where that, you know, you have a house and you have somebody looking into your house. And Council, George already mentioned that the only thing that they're concerned with the tree and the blind. So, if you think that's something that you can do, I think you probably answer what they're looking for. That's it for me.
I agree.
I want to add a suggestion and entirely up to the developers whether something they can do. Yeah, I echo a little bit with the council member because we kind of want a memorial license. We do have a second reading, so it's coming to be an opportunity to revisit. And the last thing I want to do is to derail your project or set up your timeline off of what you're going to plan. I would support it, but I want the concerns that be concerned that Ray, even those who are not here today, they're also waiting. I want to vote without their feedback. I mean, this is probably the most, most difficult vote for me because they're not council, so we take a little bit more time to deliberate. My suggestion is if you are able to plant trees both on the north and the south side, we'd like to see renderings of that committed to, that you're gonna do that with the renderings of the windows so you can adjust the sill height and also the commitment to the blinds in writing. Also, I would suggest in all this session, in all this process, partly up to you to be good neighbors, is to offer the residents who want trees planted on their property rather than as something to mitigate their privacy concern, including give them their blinds if their windows are affected, offer them blinds and trees on their property, not just on where you're developing. There's, I don't think it's a huge question.
We can do that. Yeah, we can do that in the interest of, of her baby.
And have us talk to the community, talk to the residents, one-on-one, community meetings, whatever it takes to get that done, but I don't want to change the conduct.
I, I can commit to that tonight. I don't know if that allows a vote to take place, but we're, we're happy to do that, council member.
Thank you.
We can add that to the list and...
Not just on where you're developing, there's, I don't think it's a huge question.
We can do that, yeah, we can do that, in the interest of her baby.
And have us talk to the community, talk to the residents, one-on-one, community meetings, whatever it takes to get effective, but I don't wanna change the conduct.
I can commit to that tonight. I don't know if that allows a vote to take place, but we're happy to do that, council member. We can add that to the list, and we can have a meeting between now and the 28th, and, absolutely.
Alrighty. Thank you. I think we're ready to go ahead and close the public hearing, and then we can discuss amongst ourselves. What's that?
I think we just did.
Yeah, well, we did that out of turn.
Yeah, exactly.
So, tried to, tried to say that a few times, but-
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm, maybe I can help the council. I'm gonna try to summarize what we've heard here, because I do believe the things that have been agreed upon, we would want to incorporate into the project resolution, just to solidify that this is what we've agreed upon, and memorialize that there. So what I believe we heard tonight was that the camphor tree will be repurposed into a memorial bench of some sort and placed into the open space area for the project. That blinds will be placed in the third stories of the new development, and the CCNRs will require them to remain for the life of the project.
I think the blinds were second and third, right? I thought third was just the elevation part. Okay, alright.
The third, okay. Any windows on the third floor of the new development that are not required for egress will be raised to lessen the view impact and increase privacy for homes to the north and south? That trees will be planted in the private backyards along the north and south property lines? And that trees and blinds will be offered to residents living north and south of the property at their discretion, should they wish to have the developer install those. So I believe those are the things we heard.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I don't know if we need to reopen the public hearing, or how we would do that.
Come on.
We're informal tonight.
We need to have some limits on what we're gonna be offering into other people's houses. A, we can't go on the property, we can't install anything. We can provide trees within reason, and we would wanna have some kind, the ability to agree on something. It just can't be unlimited.
And provide a blind that faces that direction, but it's not installation.
We can't go on, yeah, we can't go on.
Right, I totally understand. I'm trying to clarify first, Stan.
I think, given that there's second stories throughout that whole area, I'm fine with it just being the blinds in the third floors, and that's out of the ordinary for the rest of that area. So I think that's more than accommodating for that space.
If I may also, I'd like to, if there's a possibility for, and if it's something that the residents that came here this evening, or the residents that I know we had a community meeting, staff and myself with, if they would like to meet with the developer to discuss some of these changes and make sure that that's flushed out, I wanna make sure that that's an option for the residents that are here this evening.
He said he would, right?
So, did I hear, then, that the last condition for trees and blinds in the neighboring properties is not something that the council would wish to condition the property, the project, to have?
Just providing them, not installation or any of that.
Yeah.
At the request of someone that has requested that facing that particular direction, they would be supplied one tree and a blind, or something like that.
But it would be up to them to install or plant their own, the tree, or to put in the blind.
Wait, I thought he said that they were gonna do the blinds for all the stores?
Talking about the neighbors?
The neighbors.
Oh.
Talking about neighboring properties.
He's providing neighbors to them.
To me, it's awkward to condition that a developer does something on properties they don't own, neighboring properties they don't own, so I think it's more use your discretion on maybe how to word that.
We closed the public hearing.
I'm out of order here, but you guys, we kinda came to an agreement of the trees being on the new property, north and south, and we were very happy about that, and then that got thrown out the window. And now we're saying, "You guys can plant your own trees in your own property"?
No, no, we're talking about the neighbors.
Go ahead, let me, let me-
We'll clarify.
The mayor will clarify.
Go ahead and have, we'll try and address that. I get what you just said. Right, right, 'cause I'm not clear where we're putting trees exactly either at this point. But the developer clarified that, you know, these are gonna be privately owned homes that they're going to sell. Fifteen homes that they're gonna sell to fifteen families or whatever, and if they put trees in the backyards of those, those owners could remove them, they could, whatever. So typically, when you sell new homes, you, the new buyers have discretion on what they do with their backyards, if they wanna fill it up with all trees or landscaping, or if they wanna leave it open, or they wanna do whatever they wanna do with it, 'cause that's their private property right to do what they want with their backyards. So, I gathered that there's, you know, kinda difficulty in planting a row of hedges inside the private backyards of the homes that they're gonna sell? And it sounds like maybe there's flexibility in offering to the neighbors in their private spaces if they wanted trees or something, then the developer could provide them trees to create their own screening for themselves. I don't know. That's what I thought I heard, but I'm not sure if I understood it correctly.
I think he said that he would, they would plant a tree in each of the backyards they're building. Now, if the new guy buys it and tears it out, that's on them, but they'll actually put the tree in to create somewhat of a screen there. And then- I think that's what I got from it, right? Yeah.
Do you wanna clarify, or maybe just, or give just kind of a candid recommendation on how you wanna approach resolving this whole weird-
Sure, I'll clarify. We're happy to put the trees in the backyard. We can actually, in the CCNRs, say that you can't remove the trees, so we're happy to do that, just to facilitate the vote tonight, because we know we have an urgent situation over here.
Clarify what my comment was. I'm going back to the CCNRs, and you were willing to put in a condition that the blinds remain. And I wanna memorialize that you also agree that the trees that you would put in, in the new houses that you build, is conditioned to remain also.
We're fine doing that.
Yeah, they're fine doing that, so that's what I wanna, one of the conditions.
And on the CCNR, on the blinds, it's not that the ones we, the blinds we would install would remain, it's just that they always have to have a blind.
In general, yeah, they always have, so I'm comfortable with that.
So they can change it out if they want.
Very comfortable with that. What I suggest is, was the neighbors in the houses, that they're concerned that the line of sight from the third floor will be looking into their living spaces, and that's their concern. And I'm saying that you've already agreed, and I want it in a rendering, that you will put those trees, tall, shrinking trees, in north and south also. We're hearing east already, but we wanna see the renderings, north and south. Plus, in addition, to offer the homeowners that are impacted, trees and blinds, or a credit for trees and blinds not to go onto their property and plant. And I understand that we're not comfortable with conditioning it as the condition of approval for you to provide that. But if you could, as a good neighbor, provide a credit or the trees or the blinds for the impacted house that's existing, and that will require a conversation with them. And I want that memorialized as a footnote, and condition five is that they will meet with the residents, whether in a community setting or one-on-one, because I wanna clean up the quote-unquote allegations that they felt misled from the previous signing, canvassing, whatever, that led to this point. And I don't wanna, again, not to derail or delay your project, but just to go back, so the residents feel that they had a, you know, fair hearing and notice, and weigh in, and whatever you're able to offer as a good neighbor, I think it's a gesture of goodwill. And just like with the tree, you know, I'm a Shinto, I practice that, too. We believe in the spirits of nature, including that tree. I had to remove a tree from my backyard that was sixty, seventy years old. I built an ADU in my backyard. I had to remove it. It's very gut-wrenching. So I feel for the young girl that mentioned that. I feel for that. So whatever you can do to memorialize that, to, you know, have a, any kind of an acknowledgement of the property owner that was there, and you have an environmental impact in the minds of the residents there. And it's an ecosystem. The young lady said, "There's a lot of animals, birds, little critters there." It's an ecosystem. It's not just the tree. So it's important to these residents that we are very considerate about every part of the way. Otherwise, we're gonna be bulldozing their neighborhood without giving them some concessions. I don't care for appeasement, but to be able to meet them halfway and have that conversation should not delay the project at all, or derail it, because we have time to do that. Thank you.
I've been waiting to make a comment, I've been waiting to make my comment. I raise my hand. George, you interrupted me the first time I wanted to speak, so I'm gonna go now. My urgent situation happened to walk into the room, so I'm going to make my comments quickly. First and foremost, I want to thank the developer for making these somewhat concessions on the spot in order to continue and not disrupt your timeline. I also wanna state the fact that I don't appreciate the threats regarding November's around the corner, "We'll remember this," or "We're gonna elect you or not." We have all volunteered to become elected and be the voice for our residents, and sometimes it's difficult, because we are being forced to build over nineteen thousand units, because we have a huge housing crisis in this city. And every time we have a housing project that's going to benefit thousands of residents, we have people come here and tell us not to do it. That you're ruining the character of our neighborhoods, you're doing X, Y, Z. New Hope, that whole cul-de-sac area is dense townhomes, one and two stories. The character's very different than the single-family homes down the street, behind, and around. I understand and I appreciate all of the concerns from the residents that took the time to come meet and talk to us today during public hearing. I think the developer has done an excellent job while not being required to do so, and I can tell you that the number of developers that actually make concessions on projects, it's very rare. The fact that they're willing to do so already means that they're being a good partner with the city, with the council, and with the neighbors of the existing homes. Fifteen units may not sound like a lot, but when we have over nineteen thousand units we're being forced to build, fifteen counts. Every single unit counts, and we want to have those built. We want to have people who are living double, triple, and quadrupled up in homes to be able to have access to another home. I am, I will speak from experience, as I live in a five-hundred-and-forty-eight-square-foot condo in an extremely dense, I think it's over four hundred units, off of Clinton and Westminster. You can go look it up. It's called Les Hardin's. So I, for one, understand your concerns, and I get it, but unfortunately, that is the living arrangement that you have chosen to live in. That's what that environment is there already. This isn't taking away from that. Yes, it is an additional third story, but that's to accommodate the additional bedrooms. I was gonna allow for bigger families to be able to afford their first home, rather than living crammed up in a one- or two-bedroom apartment, which I appreciate. I've always said that we need to have more diversity in the type of housing stock that we're providing our residents, because single-family homes is no longer realistic in the city of Garden Grove. So I'm excited to have a developer that's bringing some things innovative and different. I am appreciative, again, of the concessions that you're willing to make. I don't think that you need to provide a credit to the folks that are not within the bill that you are creating. That would be great, but I don't think we should be mandating that. So long as you will be providing the blinds to the third story for the bill that you are creating, I am content with that. I know firm experience of being in those townhomes. I have three different friends that live in the units behind, I don't know how you would, south, south, and also across the street to the, to the east, west. Sorry, I'm turned around. And you can still see into the backyards. You can still, I mean, you're not gonna have the privacy that you're desiring, just because of the nature of the type of bills that are there. And so with that being said, I would make the motion to move forward with the item, with the items that have been presented, repeated, or have been discussed earlier.
And I'll second that with those concessions.
And just to clarify, removing any, that they would have to provide anything in the resolution to the, the bill that isn't there.
May I just make-
That's a good neighbor, but they may do that.
I'm just gonna make a final comment. This is a project, obviously, that's in my district. I've met with the community multiple times. This should have been flushed out already. We shouldn't have had to spend this much time on this item tonight. And I appreciate Olson's willingness to take a deeper dive and listen to the residents, and try to find some ways to fix some of these issues, but this shouldn't have had to happen like this tonight. This could have been solved with community meetings, with feedback, with better communication. So, I, as I said originally, I wanted to see this in my hand in order to vote on it. So I'm not going to be supporting this this evening. Hopefully, these concessions and these add-ons can be brought back in two weeks. Thank you.
I second it, but I would like to comment. I would like some kind of follow-up report on those things that we're not putting in, you know, like, the blinds and stuff, to make sure that the due diligence was done and that actually did happen, you know, so I'd like-
It's coming back in two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Clarification question for Nikki. The conditions that you sort of rattled off, those will be incorporated. We'll see something in two weeks when this comes back for the second reading, or something that incorporates those conditions.
Yes.
They would actually be in the actual resolution we're adopting today.
Right.
So, before we vote, let's just clarify the resolution on what was added.
Sure. So, the camphor tree will be repurposed into a memorial bench and placed in the open space area for the project. Blinds in the new construction will be placed for all third-story windows, and the CCNRs will require them to remain throughout the history of the project. Any windows on the third floor that are not necessary for egress will be raised to diminish views and potential privacy impacts to north and south properties. And then, trees will be planted along the north and south property lines, and those trees will be required to remain for the length of the project and the project CCNRs.
I'd just like to clarify that it would be most likely one tree in the backyard of each lot, not multiple. When we say trees, I don't want anybody to get a misconception that there's gonna be a line of trees. There's probably only room there for maybe one tree in front of the windows. I mean, I wanna make it clear to the builder what trees means. One tree, I would assume one tree in each backyard.
Each backyard where the space is.
Yeah, it's only like thirty feet wide. Maybe you could clarify that? I just wanna be specific on what we're voting on, so there's no-
We can do something very similar to the cypress trees that the neighbors have requested.
Okay, perfect.
They'd be just, you know, spaced, so they'd have to grow in over time.
So the word "trees" is fine with you? Okay.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure. And I would encourage the public, this is gonna come back in two weeks. I'd like to hear from you guys again, so I know it's hard to take a night off and do it, but I would like to see you guys come back.
Alright. Alright. We have, I believe, a substitute motion and a second for that substitute motion that we will take action on. I'd like to speak for just one second, 'cause I haven't said a word, and I've been trying to decipher everything everybody's saying. Housing projects often get goofy, and I understand neighbors' concerns over just the fear of something new coming in the neighborhood. But I just wanna refresh some of this for context of what I just think I observed. This seems to be, in light of the alternatives, like, for the neighbors, if you don't like this one, the next one that would come forward on the site would be a lot more atrocious, and it could be processed in a way that fell under state mandate, that the city could not deny it based on anything. So you could get fifty-three units and four stories and no setbacks, and all these sort of things. By state mandate these days, it's crazy what the state has shackled us with in terms of taking away local control. So that's something that we deal with. In that light, what I see is this developer being very conscientious. They're doing a for-sale project, not an apartment project. They're doing detached homes, not attached. They're doing seventy-five feet is a huge setback. And even the misperceived concerns over privacy, which I understand people feel that's real, but you'll see when it gets built, it's not. So, three stories up, looking out, seventy-five feet over an existing garage into a private open space that's between a garage and an existing two-story unit. It's not really gonna be as scary as you think, I guess, is sort of the concept on that. Parking's a concern. Sixty-two parking spaces for fifteen units, that's four parking spaces per home. That's huge. I mean, how many of you have four parking spaces per your house right now? Right? So, it's well-parked, it's well-thought-out, it's conscientious. To me, it fits, and I sort of, to Stephanie's point, maybe there could have been better communication or better sort of engagement in all that, right?
Not negating any of that. I just wanna make sure, again, that the residents are heard, and that it's hard for us to understand, if you're not living in their shoes, in their community, and this is gonna be squeezed in on top of them, their concerns are valid, and I just wanna make sure that they're heard. And again, I just would have preferred-
they're heard. And again, I just would have preferred to have had this flushed out ahead of time. I understand and appreciate the concessions that are being made, and I understand this project could have been so much more dense. And there are some great concessions being made here. But I I just, I want to be protective of of the people that have come out tonight and the voices that that I heard this evening. Thank you.
Fair enough. With that, we have a substitute motion and a second, and I'll call to vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes with Councilmember Clompinstein voting no.
All righty, thank you. Maybe we'll wait just a couple of minutes for everybody to clear out who wants to clear out because that's we're done with our business items. After that, we just have matters.
Cindy, can you come back up and wait until the end of the meeting to talk to people, please? This is for them to clear out, not for us to ask questions and have conversations.
Are you guys trying to get stuff signed for school? Do you want to do that real quick? Yeah, do you want to do that real quick? Oh, okay, cool. Got it. You guys both good?
All three of them.
Okay, cool, cool. Who's the creepy guy in the back?
He should go talk to you first.
He's thinking to himself, this is the one that's going to go faster.
Yeah, that's why I post. They let you go first and then you can leave.
I'm trying. Do we know, is Stephanie coming back or is she conversating?
Probably conversing. We can start. She's going to go by.
Yeah, let's go first.
Let's go Kim before.
Here she is. Yeah. All right. We'll go on to matters. Go ahead.
I just need to report that I attended the SCAG conference on May second through the third. I attended wonderful workshops, got to network with council members from up and down north, southern California. And I was joined by City Manager Lisa Kim and Councilmember Tran as well, who served in my place as delegate and voted on my behalf, as I had a very important assistant with me that prevented me from participating in a lot of the activities at a specific time. So I want to thank Councilmember Tran for assisting and participating as my alternate for that. Thank you.
Yep.
Joe?
We're going around the horn already, so number eighteen.
This is it, matters.
Okay, yes. Well, thank you, Mayor, and council members for very spirited deliberations tonight. And I learned a lot. Especially, I felt the the residents gave voice to their own cause tonight, which is important. So I'm actually with Stephanie on this one. I want them to be heard, and I want the the process to be afforded so that they are the one most impacted by the development. And concessions or not, we got to live with what we need to develop in our city. And I I agree with Councilwoman Kim also because and and Mayor, which is, we may not, we may not have too much choices here. So given the the choices, I think this is a pretty good choice as it gets. And then we have a very mindful developer. And they they came here ready to do whatever it takes to move this project, but also to be a good neighbor. So I appreciate that very much. Other than that, the rest of the agenda was pretty straightforward. And I'm looking forward to ICSC this weekend. So hopefully, we'll be able to bring back more development to our city. A lot of city would be envious of us, of what we have going. So, yeah, it's growing pains, but we 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 have to take it as we grow together. So thank you, everyone.
Cindy?
I apologize. I have several items. First, just want to say thanks to Councilmember Kim Nguyen Panalosa for having me to represent our city at the SCAG. And second, I want to say thanks to Lisa Kim, our city manager, for driving us. We tried to save the money for the city, so we didn't go the day before. We drove really early the next day and not just driving me to the event, but Lisa also were able to contact, connect with Scott Stahl, our former city manager, so that way we were able to have a quick tour at the navigation center there, which almost done. And so we were able to tour and see, you know, what good and what we could kind of use that for our navigation center that coming up. Two weeks ago, I actually flew to Sacramento with the Chamber of Commerce. When we went there, we had two goal. The first one was for me to bring the the top priority issue or concern from our city, so that way we could ask for funding. And so that morning, we had meeting with Senator Tom Umberg, Senator Janet Nguyen, and Assembly Trata. Each one of them were able to give us some information about where can we go to ask for more funding. And Tom Umberg were actually, staff was actually tried to make the connection between our city with different area that we could ask for funding, so that hopefully we'll have some good result come out from that. Next one is the community cleanup on May eleven. So I just want to say thanks to our Public Works for the work that they did. I went there. There were so many resident and every single person went there, they actually gave a good compliment or praise to our city for doing this because when you went there, you could see they were through away, could be anything, tree, grass, broken stuff, trash, I mean, you you name it. And so I cannot wait for the next one and remind everyone that, you know, whatever inside your house that you don't want to keep. So it was good event just to see the excitement from everyone, not just Garden Go resident. There were all the resident, too. And I asked, and they said that, because public, the public service that they're doing for all the city, too. So they they take from Anaheim, too. Next one was about the the Buddha Festival. So I just want to say thanks to our staff, Janet, and Sergeant Lino Santana for their support at that event. Councilmember Stephanie Cofferson came with me, and we got many compliment from the people there to say how amazing our Garden Go staff was to support the community for that event. And all the people said they cannot wait to have more event at our city. Next one was the retirement for Garden Go teacher retirement. There were more than thirty teacher that got retired. And just want to say thanks to Matt Webb, our city assistant manager, for his support because, you know, when you go, you don't know where to go and all the paperwork and who you need to talk to and the topic. But Matt was there, helped me all the way from the beginning to the end and find information so that I would be ready to come up there and speak in behalf of our city. Last but not least, that was the Garden Go High School choir pop event two days ago, I think. It was amazing to see our Garden Go High School student perform. And they was just like a very professional with all their dancing and singing. So I really enjoy that. And this event coming up is the the event that between our, well, actually, for District Three and District Four, for me and Councilman Joe Dovin, with our staff, we're going to have a community event on May, oh, May twenty-nine, from five to six-thirty at nine-nine-nine-nine restaurant. There will be live refreshment. So please come and ask a question. Our city staff will be there to give you some information about different type of fund or benefit that you could get resources from our city. That's it for me.
Make it real quick. I just wish everybody, hopefully, they had a great Mother's Day weekend. I also attended the Pops concert from Garden Grove High School. That was very cool, amazing what those kids, there were so many of them, it was crazy. And then, you know, before our next council meeting, we'll already have had the Strawberry Festival. So actually, a week from Friday is the cake cutting. Geez, it's already going to be June here before you know it. So looking forward to seeing everybody at the Strawberry Festival. That's all I got. Thank you. George?
Yeah. First thing, I just wanted to mention the Fallen Six Police Memorial this Thursday, five p.m. in front of the police station. So if anybody's inclined, we'd show show our respects for those Guard Groves officers who died in the line of duty. And I don't want to take the mayor's thunder because I know he's going to adjourn in Randy Arbogast's honor. Those who didn't know, Randy was commissioner for the city of Garden Grove, Strawberry Festival. The guy volunteered for everything. He was, he was a staple of the community for decades. I've known him for a long time. Anyway, he was a tragic loss. We, Garden Grove Kiwanis is doing a poker fundraiser for his family this Friday at Kiwanis Land at six o'clock. If you don't play poker, you can contribute, there'll be a donation box there. You can throw twenty bucks in or whatever. So anyway, just putting that out. Any any poker players? Come on out. Well, I'm sure Randy would really like that we were playing poker in his honor, in his family's honor. As as John said, Strawberry Festival's next weekend or following weekend, after, not this weekend, the following weekend. The parade is Saturday, May twenty-fifth. So I think we'll all be there, hopefully, and see everybody. Get your parade wave on, right? And then finally, happy anniversary to my wife, Lisa. Thirty thirty-three years last Saturday. So, and that's all.
Thank you. City Manager Lisa Kim.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Just a couple items. I just wanted to take note that the 2024 Point in Time Count was released last week. And while there was an overall twenty-eight percent increase in homeless individuals that were identified, approximately seven thousand three hundred and twenty-two individuals in the county of Orange, for Garden Grove, we saw a thirty-nine percent decrease in our numbers. So there was a total of one hundred and sixty-three unsheltered and seventy-six individuals sheltered, bringing our total to two thirty-nine, resulting in a thirty-nine percent decrease. And this is a testament to the collective work of our special resources team. Under Ursula's department, we have the community, the Economic Development Department that oversees our housing and our homelessness initiatives in collaboration with Public Works and Community Services. This is a collective team effort that brought this number down. And lastly, I just wanted to thank the council. Earlier today, we had the groundbreaking for our future police building. It was exciting to see everyone in attendance and supporting this historic project. And we'll continue to provide updates to the council as the project continues to start construction. Thank you.
Thank you. General Counsel, anything to report out or any need for closed session after?
Mayor, we did have a closed session earlier this evening, and there's no reportable action out of the closed session, and we don't need any additional.
Thank you. Okay, it is with heavy heart that tonight's meeting will be adjourned in the memory of a good man and a good friend, Mr. Randy Arbogast. Randy was a big guy with a big heart who spent a lot of his time volunteering for his community. He was first appointed by Mayor Dalton to serve on the Sanitary District Advisory Commission in two thousand nine. He was appointed to the Traffic Commission in two thousand eleven and also in two thousand twenty-one, and was appointed to the Planning Commission in two thousand twenty-three. He volunteered for the Strawberry Festival, making sure to keep everything running smooth. And he was a longtime member of the Kiwanis Club of Garden Grove and was the club's treasurer. He was very committed to maintaining Kiwanis Land for child-related community partners, including the Boys and Girls Club and the Boy Scouts. More importantly, is that Randy was a beloved husband and father who passed far too soon and will never be forgotten. My thoughts and prayers are with his family and friends at this time. And for those who would like to honor Randy's generosity, Kiwanis of Garden Grove is hosting a fundraiser on Friday, May seventeenth, at six p.m. Thank you, and we will stand adjourned.